All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Janine, would you please do the roll call?
Penny Casimir. Penny Casimir. Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Mike Shackleton. Gavin Newman. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Collister-Lazare.
Here.
Will you stand and join us as Dr. Harris leads us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. We have Penny Casimir and Sandra Bradford on the phone tonight. They're both not able to join us because of medical issues. So I get the privilege of emceeing tonight. It'll be really fun. So anyway, thank you so much for coming and we're going to start with the president's report. Brian, do you have a report tonight? I mean Penny, do you have a report tonight?
I do, actually, thank you. This is all related to the superintendent search. So as the board members, in an effort to develop the profile of what the board should be looking for in a superintendent, a search firm were working with School Exec Connect led 11 focus groups with roughly 90 participants last week on October 28th and 29th. These were originally planned to be in person, but they were ultimately held virtually. Tomorrow, the 5th, School Exec Connect will be hosting two virtual forums, one for staff and one for community members. And we had to ask people to sign up. Very firm is with the link. We have 71 staff members signed up and 37 community members. So in addition to those activities, the search firm also welcomes feedback via a questionnaire that was closed this past Friday. So School Exec Connect will attend our November 7th board meeting and present the board with its findings. And then those findings will be posted on the district's website. Lastly, the board set aside time on December 2nd and 3rd to conduct initial candidate interviews. At our last board meeting, if you remember, the board discussed the need for a proper location to hold these interviews. Since then, several board members have expressed concern about in-person interviews. So I did check with the search firm and they confirmed that none of their other districts that they're working with right now are conducting in-person interviews for that initial interview phase. So I shared this information with all of you yesterday and wanted to just be sure there are no objections to moving in this direction. So since I can't see you, I'm going to ask if there is an objection for someone to say so. And maybe Angela, you could recognize them.
I don't see any heads shaking. I think you're good.
Okay. I'll just add, I will keep moving forward in that direction then. But I wanted to add, I do have strong feelings that we really should conduct the second round of interviews in person. So unless there's an objection to this, I will move forward in finding a good location for those. And to remind you, those are the following weeks. So are there any objections to that?
None.
Okay. Okay, then I'm done. Thank you very much.
Penny, can I just ask you one follow-up question? And I think that you cleared this up in an email today, but I just wanted to confirm. There's no interview on November 30th, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have come to the time of public comment. We've set aside time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions. In accordance with Board Policy 2:230, we ask that you state your name, your attendance area, and/or relationship with the district before beginning your comments. We also ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. Janine has a timer and a bell. While this is not a conversation, if any comments require further attention, we'll ask Dr. Harris to follow up and report back to the board. In order to allow as many as possible to speak, if someone else has spoken and represented your views, don't feel the need to repeat their comments if you don't want to or if you don't feel comfortable talking. You can simply stand up and show your support of whoever's currently speaking. So we have a list here. And the first speaker is Paul Rudnicki.
Good evening. My name is Paul Rudnicki. I live in the west end of Barrington Hills, so I have a daughter who goes to Countryside and a son who's in 8th grade at Prairie. Don't have to do anything. Okay, all right. Sorry, people can't hear me very well. Can the board hear me okay?
Pull the mic closer.
Yeah, pull the mic closer. I don't think it's coming through. Is it working?
How's that?
Light is on.
Say hello.
Can you hear? Are you adjusting it? Try it now, Paul.
Now try it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, better. Great, okay. So real quick, I'm Paul Rudnicki. I have a daughter at Countryside in 3rd grade and a son at Prairie in 8th. I first off wanted to thank the board. I appreciate the responses I got. I wrote an email after the last board meeting and I got several responses and I appreciate the responses I got. Also, the invitation and phone call I have with Dr. Harris to talk about some of my concerns. So I appreciate the feedback on that. I wanted to come and address the decision to, in the adaptive pause of whether to go back to school or not go back to school, just to give the board my thought. As I've watched the numbers go up for the last week, I was kind of taken aback by the email we got on Monday where the board or the district had put off that decision until later this week. I'm trying to fathom how that came to pass. I'd love to hear some of the reasons and rationale behind that. As far as I can see during the adaptive pause, the coronavirus case numbers continually steadily climbed in all four zip codes and as well as the total of the community as a whole. So I don't understand why the decision to postpone. That's the thing, I guess, that's really kind of bugging me today. It feels like there's a push to go back even though the numbers are higher than they've been and it's more than twice the threshold that the board had set for when we'd go back to remote learning in its entirety. So that seems a little off to me. Also, as the board does consider, you know, whenever we get to come out of an adaptive pause or get back to hybrid mode of any kind, if we ever get to go back to that before we go back to full-on school as we used to know it, I'm curious to hear what any other changes might be to the schedule for the middle school and the elementary. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Katie Carum.
Hi, my name is Katie Carum and I have three children, two at Prairie and one at Roslin. I've decided after weekly emails, it's about time I spoke in person. I'd like to start off by saying I want kids back in school full-time. And no, it's not because I'm missing out on my Pilates or my tennis. It's because I believe if anyone in this world is essential, it's our teachers and our kids. And while I respect parents who've made the decision that remote learning is best for them, I've had enough time to determine it's not working for my children. Board members that don't have 220 students in your home, I invite you to spend a day in ours. You can witness the tears, the breakdowns as grades continue to go down because you just can't learn this way, the yelling, the refusals to log on to another Zoom call, the silence of a middle school breakout room. You can listen to teachers struggle to engage kids online, continually ask kids to turn on their screen, explain the same concepts over and over. I know teachers are doing twice the work with this hybrid schedule and the flip-flopping back and forth, adaptive pauses help no one. And with all this, I still know I'm one of the lucky ones. My kids don't have an athletic scholarship they were depending on. I don't have a senior trying to figure out how to make it through the year with good enough grades to get into college. I'm not staying awake at night worried that my child might harm themselves. I don't have to choose between my job and my children. I don't have to choose between paying a bill or upgrading our internet so that all three kids can be on Zoom at once. Board members, I looked up your responsibilities as I was starting to question who works for who. Since August, we've watched Dr. Harris present his slides on returning to school as if they are a foregone conclusion. Well, it turns out you have the right to say no. I copied this directly from your site. The district is governed by a school board consisting of seven members. The board's powers and duties include the authority to adopt, enforce, and monitor all policies for the management and governance of the district's schools. Honestly, I feel like I have nothing to lose at this point because I've put it all out there, so I'm going to say what many are thinking. Requesting being led through this educational crisis by someone who will not be around to deal with the consequences of his actions on the other side of this. Someone who feels he has been put into a difficult position when it comes to making decisions for our district. Someone who describes going to school as a quaint tradition. We are already months behind our other districts and states. This is the legacy you are leaving behind, putting 220 at a complete educational disadvantage and putting our children at risk socially and emotionally over an ever-changing set of metrics and against the advice of health experts who say kids need to be in school. Even with a vaccine, you've made it almost possible for us to return to full-time school. COVID is not going away. We need to figure out how to make our kids a priority and how to live with this. Parents feel helpless. We feel like we have no control. We are scared watching what this is doing to our children. Board members, please listen. We elected you and we expect you to step up and fight for our children. We expect to be given a choice. Thank you.
Next, we have Wendy Reardon.
Wendy Reardon?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Reardon. I have three student athletes at Barrington High School. I'm just going to read what I wrote because I think it's easier. Okay, so the rhetoric and the political climate this past week in regards to our student athletes playing high school basketball shows how poorly we are leading our students through this COVID pandemic. The good news is, and I'm here today to remind you that it's not too late to be a leader in this conversation. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter and all of our student athletes that are ready to play. I want to share with you how this can work. Here are some of the facts. Competitive basketball has been played throughout COVID with proper protocols in place since the first weekend in June. I'm hopeful that we can use this as a blueprint to successfully start the basketball season. Since mid-July, BHS has run all types of sports camps with minimal COVID incidents and protocols in place for when a student tests positive. Thirdly, Iowa, Wisconsin, Michigan, Indiana, Minnesota are all set to start the high school basketball season. If you are concerned about liability, parents are willing to sign a waiver to mitigate this. If there is an issue with liability, I think it would be very helpful if that was explained to the community because I think it's a pretty complicated issue and people just think that someone's going to sue and that's what happens. I think it's probably more complicated than that, but I think together we can work through it. I realize that the survival rate for COVID, this metric, it doesn't seem to have an importance in these discussions, but our athletes and the children that are under the age of 19 have a 99.997% survival rate for COVID. So that might actually mitigate the litigation risk. Sixth, these athletes are willing to play with masks. The fact is that my daughter played in over 40 games from June to September in various states with no masks, no incidents on her team or on the teams that she played with. Our student athletes are in the middle of political posturing and it is our responsibility to rise above it and lead on this issue. Our athletes deserve better from us. They deserve a choice in whether or not to play. BSD 220 does not force anyone to play basketball. People choose to play basketball. In closing, our competitive athletes that are out there right now, they're not going to let politics get in the way of this. They're going to figure out a way to play. They're going to get better at basketball. But what they really want and what they really need is to play for their team. Uh-oh. Okay. I request that you stand with the IHSA on this. Stand with your student athletes, let them play. I wish you had the same confidence that I did. I've experienced it. It can be done successfully and it really doesn't need to be political. Just let them play. Thanks.
Good evening, board members. My name's Alexa Albrecht. I have two students at Barrington High School. I have a senior and I have a freshman. Unlike some of the others in the room, I do have a Division I student athlete. And she lost her recruiting season last spring. Luckily, she has secured and met her goal because her objective was to play Division I sports. I'm actually here not to talk about sports. I'm here to talk about school and what I'm watching in my house. I would invite you to read your own documents that sit on the website. School District Organization. The foremost aim of the community, School District 220 Public Schools is to provide the best educational program possible for the youth of our district. Our goal is excellence, to develop the optimum potential of each student. And in doing so, we hope to enhance both our children's personal welfare and their ability to contribute to the betterment of our free society. I would ask every one of you to sit and think. Do you think that is what you're doing right now? You don't have to answer. I don't. I'm watching my freshman crumble.
He cried. He was in... I think the mic just turned off.
I'm watching him cry after every test. This is a kid who was in math two years above his grade level for all of middle school. Do you want to know what his grade is in geometry right now? I'm going to embarrass him. It's an F. He's failing. And it's not because his teacher's not trying. She is. But he has to email her to ask for help. He has to sign up for a Zoom link for help. He's supposed to go to the Academic Resource Center through Zoom. Have any of you really felt like that's a personal attention, a way to get help from somebody else? Not at all? He cried when he came home from school after that first week of hybrid and said, "Mom, all the teachers are saying that they don't think we're going to keep going. What did we do wrong?" And I don't have a good answer for him. I don't think your teachers are doing very well at this either. My son has 31 absences. He's not absent that much. There's something wrong with the attendance system. When they do an asynchronous lesson and it's turned in, but they're shown as absent, what is that? Nobody's fixing it. My daughter has 15 missing ungraded assignments that show up in her grades that she has to show her future coach because the teachers can't keep up. I would ask you again, are you doing the best thing for our students? Consider the risk. COVID is not going anywhere. We have to learn to live with it. And I would love to see this district, which has always been seen as a leader, step up and lead, make choices, show it how it's done. Look at the Catholic schools. They've demonstrated that it can work. Thank you.
I'm on my mic, sorry. It's on. Just keep talking. Next up is Maria Steckler.
Steckler.
Steckler, sorry.
Okay. That's not working.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Just try holding. Okay, my name's Maria Steckler. I just had a son that graduated in the spring from the BHS. I also have a six-year-old in North Barrington, an eight-year-old in North Barrington, and a nine-year-old in North Barrington. It's not working.
Yeah, it's not working.
There you go.
I don't think any of our mics are working.
Just hold it. Hold it. Is it working now? No. You don't have to...
There, there it is.
It's making me hold it.
It's good.
Okay, I'll hold it.
Take your hand out. We see that.
No, it's not working.
The red light's on and then it's working.
The red light's not on.
I hold it. And I better not be being timed.
Eric, can you?
Okay. Now it's...
Can you help? There, it's going.
Okay, now it's working. Okay.
Sorry.
Set, go. Now you can do the timer. Okay, so as I was saying, I have a six-year-old and an eight-year-old and a nine-year-old in Barrington now, Barrington, North Barrington. First I want to start with, I am disgusted at the way it was handled in the spring. I cried every single...
All right, there's... I'll get this fixed.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can we have the hand held?
The hand held?
It's out.
I don't know. It's going off and on. We can see it.
This evening.
I'm not going to touch it.
It's on now.
As I was saying, my son's senior year was absolutely friggin' ruined and I'm not the only parent that thinks this.
Just use that. You can just sit there, that's fine.
No, I like... It's fine. I'm a stander. I actually speak, so this doesn't bother me. You ruined our seniors' year and you guys could have done a better job. I am disgusted by the way that it was handled. We moved here just for Barrington 220 School District and you guys have failed us. You failed all these parents in here. It's disgusting. You not only failed the parents that moved here and are paying your bills, you're failing these children. Thank God my son got into his school that he wanted to and he's happy and he's thriving. You're in school. He's in school in Tennessee and thriving. You guys aren't doing this for these children here. It's not fair. Now I'm going to go into my children now, my six-year-old, my seven-year-old, or my eight-year-old and my nine-year-old. I work full-time from home. My husband works in Schaumburg. My nine-year-old has to go to work with him every day because I can't handle all three of them. Let alone do my job to pay your bill, to pay these taxes. That we're supposed to be getting a great education for our children. This is ridiculous. This is not okay. COVID is not going away, like every other person said when they came up here. We need to learn how to do it. We need to learn how to handle it. Private schools are doing it. Versace is doing it. St. Anne's is doing it. What's wrong with you? Why can't you do it? We're paying you. You're making good money. I know that. I see my taxes. You guys all see your taxes, right? This isn't right. We are paying you to do a job and that's to educate our children. And you're failing us. My six-year-old cries, slumps down in his seat on a Zoom call and he stops in the middle of it and then I get massive calls from the school saying, "My child's not on Zoom." You'll be holding my children back this year because you have failed my children. I don't have a choice. I have to work. That's how I pay your salary. That's how I pay these taxes to this town that I moved to that I... Oh, God. That I expected, that I expected to actually do their job. I don't need this thing. This is ridiculous. Do better. You're supposed to be one of the best school districts in the state of Illinois. You're failing our children. Do you want to see all these children held back? Because I guarantee you, I'm not the only one. I'm done.
Good evening. I got to figure out what mic to use. Does this one use? Does this work? Good evening. My name is Brian Vaddell. I live in the lines attendance area. I have two children. They both graduated Barrington High School, the product of lines and station as well as the high school. In addition, I am a former school board member, so it's good to see you guys. I know you're dealing with a lot of difficult issues and you certainly have the empathy of all former board members. It's hard. But I am here because you guys also made a very big decision when you first decided to run for the school board. It was a decision that we all shared and we all have different motivations for running. There is an election, a school board election in the spring. There are people, they're circulating petitions. There are a group of former board members who are going to get together and kind of offer a bit of a Q&amp;A forum for District 220 community members who are thinking about running for the school board. You remember when you were in that position, there were lots of questions, what's it like? I hear certain myths, so we'll try to address some of those. So we have set aside time for this forum. It'll be Wednesday, November 18th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. We're going to do it in the Pavilion Building at Citizens Park. It'll be inside. We have enough space there where we can properly kind of space people out. And we will have a number of former school board members from the last few years. And we want to invite any community members who are thinking about running for the school board to try to attend the Q&amp;A. We'll try to answer any questions to hopefully try to encourage as many people to think about running for the school board as possible. So I know you guys get a lot of people to inquire for you. I would encourage you to pass along my contact information. Anybody else in the community, we'd like to get as many people there as possible and try to answer their questions. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks, Brian. Brian, is there a sign up or anything that you need people to do?
No, if you just want to have them contact me, now might you pick in. My cell phone is 847-217-9702. Feel free to share.
Awesome.
Thanks.
All right.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mary Margaret Olson and my husband and I have worked in Barrington for three children, all of whom went through the Barrington schools. And they now, as adults, all live in Barrington. And amongst them, we have seven grandchildren, all of whom, well, attended the Barrington schools. I have had, from the very beginning of all of the challenges of District 220, has faced a very keen interest in all of this. I am a retired teacher of 28 years in the profession and I have a deep commitment for children, an advocacy for children, and of course, my grandchildren are students in District 220. In my opinion, and this might sound a little harsh, but I just, I have to be very authentic and honest with you. I feel that there has been little leadership in this district or advocacy for children. In my opinion, we should have started in August. And opening the schools after a week and a half was, and then closing them after a week and a half, was very confusing to families and really I feel cruel to children. I feel that we are discriminating against a child's right to learn. And we are always told, well, why are we closing? It's because of the signs. We are science-driven. Well, I have a question for everyone on the board and Dr. Harris as well. Is someone just aggregating the data that we are so driven by to see where this data is going and where it is coming from as well? I know that in Will County, for example, upon further analysis, when they had a spike within their county, they looked more closely and they determined that the occurrences came from three nursing facilities. I'd like to ask you, is anyone looking at this data intensively, tracking the hospitalizations, fatalities? Where are these cases coming from? Because that's all we hear is that we're data-driven and we're science-driven. However, if we are science-driven, the recovery rate as some of the other... However, if we are science-driven, the recovery rate, as some of the other parents brought up, in the age group of zero to 19 years, the recovery rate is 99.8%. There is little pathogenicity that takes place within children. There is very little COVID transmission in the schools, and there has been over 11,000 epidemiologists who have called to end the lockdowns because they simply do not work.
Thank you. Thanks.
So please, I'm imploring, I'm imploring you to open our schools, we at least just, we have to try. If this continues, this lockdown continues, we are putting children further and further at risk. And I concur with all of the speakers this evening, because I have seen the ill effects of this lockdown amongst my own grandchildren. We are thriving. They go to public...
Mary Margaret, I have to ask you to wrap it up, just so other people can have a chance.
...they go to private school, and others have children.
Grace Hayes.
Hello. Hi. My name is Grace Hayes, BHS class of 2016, Florida State University class of 2020. I'm speaking to you on behalf of Be the Change Barrington. We are a coalition of 85 Barrington 220 alumni, students, and community members. We aim to move the Barrington community in a more inclusive direction for minority students and families through improving the culture around race and equity in our schools. We preface this by acknowledging the strain that the COVID-19 pandemic has placed on the board's ability to prioritize other important matters going on in the district right now. However, we also know that fighting for racial and social justice in our community is a moral imperative that can't be put on hold by a virus. BTCB urges the board to reflect on the way it has publicly responded to instances of hate crimes and vigorous harassment targeted at current and former Barrington students. As you're all aware, on the evening of October 17th, a Barrington family's home was vandalized and graffitied with homophobic slurs and threats. As a bisexual woman, I was devastated to hear this news. However, the district didn't release a public statement condemning the violence until 11 days later on October 28th, after Barrington community members put pressure on the district to do so. We understand the limitations that the ongoing investigation may have placed on the district's ability to respond promptly, but we don't believe that is an excuse to delay so long in reacting with a public display of empathy to this deeply upsetting event. You must do better for these victims and for your marginalized students who look to you for reassurance and safety when their identities are being threatened. This is not the first time a hate crime targeting our students or alumni has occurred, but the common thread between these incidents has been the lack of urgency and leadership in response from the district. Even though the current nationwide movement for racial justice began after George Floyd was murdered in late May, it took the district three months to release a statement showing public support for Barrington students of color, once again, only after community pressure to do so, and with the comfort of a new equity director to take this responsibility off of the board's plate. What kind of message does this lack of urgency send to marginalized students at Barrington? That the discrimination, harassment, and sometimes violence that they face in our town and in our schools is not a priority? That it'll always be the last item on the agenda, having to be put off until the next meeting, over and over? Barrington students who are victims of hate crimes deserve strong, visible moral support from their school officials directly after the incident occurs. These issues in our community may not affect you or your children, but they are very real, and you can't sit by and wait for them to die down like a PR inconvenience. You must take quick decisive action because these hate crimes are... Not isolated anomalies by any means. They are symptoms of a much larger problem in our schools that the district has an obligation to confront and address now in ways that go far beyond a regurgitated statement on an Instagram story or buried in the middle of a newsletter. We're ready to finally listen to your discussions on equity tonight and going forward, but this is by no means a finished job. This work takes time and dedication. Your consistent actions in demonstrating your visible support for marginalized students and your commitment to creating an inclusive Barrington community will be where the true change begins to happen. Thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you.
Do I have to press any? No, okay, I'm good. My name is Nicole Molinaro. My family is in Barrington because of the excellent schools. I have five children in the district. One graduated BHS last spring. He missed... I actually feel worse for the seniors now than I felt for my son, who missed his final month. I have two in high school and two in middle school. My sixth grader has an IEP, and I just got her MAP score back, and it is significantly lower than it's ever been. It's always low, but it's never been this low. I attribute a significant portion of this decline to the fact that she did not get her IEP minutes last spring, or really, this fall, and she still isn't in school. I just want to ask the board and Dr. Harris, what is the endgame here? With the metrics that are set, we will never be going back to school five days a week, even with 50 out of 100,000. I know you increased that from the whopping seven, but that's still not good enough. I would like to know why this was a decided metric from the Health Department. How did this compare to other viruses like the flu and strep? Do we have metrics like this? If you continue to work off these metrics, our children will not be back to in-person school until when? Will that be late 2021, 2022, 2023, or maybe never? Yes, we can all think never is extreme, but who would have thought we would have been out of school for this long when it was canceled in the spring of 2021? Why are other districts that surround us, like District 15, able to get back their children five full days a week? They've been successful for almost a month. Other states, other than Illinois, have been going to school and playing sports since August, not seeing this super spread or rise that we all claim in Illinois. But here, in many parts of Illinois, we still think we are doing the safe thing by keeping our kids at home. Have any of you talked to states that have made it work? To name a few, Wisconsin, Iowa, Florida, Texas, Indiana. I have several friends in Indiana, in various school districts, that have been back five full days a week. They had homecoming, they played football, they lived life. I have sent you many articles over the past two weeks, many of them articulating that keeping kids out of in-person school is the wrong decision. Children are not super-spreaders. Stop ignoring the science. Stop just looking at the positivity rate and the crazy metrics of so many people out of 100,000. Stop failing to consider the damage being caused to our children and our families' collective mental health. It is significant, and it will be long-lasting. I am not sure how many pleas you need to hear that our children need to be in-person school. Or will you not really act until there is a true damage done, like a suicide or domestic abuse, that cannot be reported because the children were not in school when they should have been there? Start. Please start acting like the leaders this community has elected. You to be. I'm almost done. Take a stand and get your children back in school, because right now, you are responsible for letting the cure be worse than the virus. You are the leaders and make the decisions here, not the parents and the kids that have begged you to be in school since August. Thank you.
Randy Grodzinski. Randy? Grodzinski?
Yeah.
Oh.
What's his name?
Randy?
Yeah.
Oh, there, sorry.
I'm going to speak loudly so everybody can hear me, because I sit in the back and it's sort of hard to hear. Hi, my name is Randy Grodzinski. I live here in the village of Barrington. My daughter is a sophomore at the University of Texas at Austin studying biomedical engineering. And my son is a junior at Barrington High School. I know some of you had a chance to meet him before. He also happens to be a 4.0 student and a student athlete. He's a basketball player. He was a starter as a sophomore last year, and he is a captain of the team here as a junior. And I think I'd be doing a disservice if I wasn't sitting here talking to all of you and expressing what I'm about to express right now. The governor of Illinois has stood up in front of all of us and said, "We are going to politicize this, right? We're going to listen and trust the science." Okay, here's the science, if I may. I'm going to screw this up. The University of Wisconsin did a study. It was just completed. I'm biased, the University of Wisconsin, I'm sure some of you saw this. They polled 207 schools that played fall sports. There were 30,000 athletes, 16,000 practices, more than 4,000 games. And the instances of positivity of COVID was no different in that group than it was among the general student population. And they were only able to count one case that came through actually participating in the sports. So if you listen to the science, and I actually was an economics and math major and did my thesis in statistics, that's a statistically significant sample right there, right? So if you believe this, and you may choose not to, by not allowing them to play in sports, you really aren't protecting them any more than they are by when I walk by the Campus Life Center and I see 40 kids there, or the parks around here and the kids are all playing, they're all getting together. They're trick-or-treating, they're hanging out together. So you aren't protecting them. But I do feel strongly you are hurting them. This has been a dream. Jim Als, you had my son way back at Hock. He's a good student. It's not like, look, he's been dreaming about this, he's been working towards this. I have to look him in the face, a 4.0 student who understands logic and say, "They're doing it in 35 other states. I'm from Munster, Indiana. Dad, your high school had prom. They all went to school, they played sports, and the statistics are no different." So if we aren't protecting them, who are we protecting? Is it all of you? Is it liability? Wendy, I've been signing waivers for my son for a decade now. We are hurting these children more than we are helping them. Thank you both, and I respect you as elected officials. Thank you for listening to me.
My name is Abigail Bergen, and I'm speaking today to continue the dialogue I've had with the district regarding the homophobic hate crime that took place in our district last month. The district did end up releasing a statement, but it was more than a week after the event occurred. And while the statement did raise awareness, it felt like too little, too late. We, as a community, must take stronger action against hate. If I'm not mistaken, this is the third homophobia-related hate crime in our community since 2018. Solidarity and support is a good start, but we must take stronger action. We must implement stricter anti-harassment policies to make our community a safe place for everyone. We cannot let hate take over. As an institution, it is up to you to make a positive change in our community for solid, definitive action. We must lead with love and compassion. And on that note, in regards to distance learning, I'd like to touch on compassion as well. I, like many of the other students discussed, am a student athlete, an AP student, and engaged in many community activities. You know what? It sucks to miss my junior year. I wish I could go on college visits. I wish I could compete in my sport and see my friends and attend classes in the building. But I recognize that that can't happen right now, and I understand why. It pains me to see so many people calling to go back to school and touting the high survival rate for COVID, survival in people our age. I have a very rare autoimmune condition, and that 99% survival rate does not apply to me. I don't know how I might recover from catching COVID. So when people start talking about prioritizing sports over living, I don't know how to respond. Distance learning is about compassion. I would love to go back to school, but we must be compassionate and realize that people's lives matter more than grades. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, that is all we have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else?
My name is Charlotte Murray. I am a former student at Barrington High School, and I am one of the lucky few to have left. I go to St. Vitter High School, which is in-person, and I can tell you right now from experience of being in e-learning in May, St. Vitter's better. And that's really not saying much. So I have two siblings. Both of them are unfortunately still in the Barrington 220 school system. I have a sister with special needs. And let me tell you right now, this whole COVID situation and the e-learning response, it has been horrendous. It has been horrendous. There's no other way to describe it. I have to see her every day, cry while doing homework. You know what happened? She has developed tics because of the stress that this has put upon her. She just came back to school on Monday after many, many emails, just asking that she can have some sort of therapy, some sort of interaction with other students her age, with anyone outside of her own family. She left before lunch. She was isolated in the lunchroom the entire day. No one knew her schedule, no one knew where to send her. She sat alone on Zoom, and she cried. No teacher knew what to do. They called my mother to help control her. And you know what they did on the call? They laughed. They laughed like everything was normal, like it was a huge joke. They laughed while she cried in the background with her head on the desk. I don't understand how they could have a response like that to something like this. Why it took so many emails to simply get her in the school? And not even for a full week, for three days. And she couldn't even make it through the first one. You should be ashamed. That's all I have to say. You should just be ashamed. There are students, like my sister, who are suffering. They are suffering because of your decisions. I understand that the positivity rates are going up, and I understand that e-learning might be necessary for those who have an autoimmune disorder. But you need to have better outreach for students like my sister. Students who can't even make it through one hour of homework without breaking down and crying, without tics. That's all I have to say. I cannot stand that bell, and I do not want to hear it.
Is there anyone else? Like to speak?
So I've had the pleasure to email all of you. I'm Kathleen Schmitz. I have four kids. One has successfully gone through BHS, and glad she's on her way out of college. I have one whose spring semester of her senior year was absolutely destroyed with no help from this district. And I understand back then, we didn't know what we were dealing with. We went about it the wrong way, and it wasn't necessarily your fault. The guidance was horrible. But now here we are. We're supposed to go back to school, and the positivity rate is 3.5%. We were told it's not safe. Yet it's 5.5% a few weeks ago. Let's all go back to school. Seriously. If 3.5% wasn't safe, how is 5.5? And then you send them to school for a week and tell them, "Oh, no, you can go Monday and you can go Tuesday, but the rest of the week is not safe." Why? My daughter came home from school on Tuesday, and she talked 1,000 words a minute, which is a lot more than she usually talks. You know why she was so happy? Because she got to go to school. I said to my husband, "Did you ever think we would be fighting for our kids to go to school?" And how could something as going to school, which they always dread, "Do I have to go", could make an 11-year-old so flippin' happy? That's insane. That is insane. The CDC put out an article this summer that said the kids stand to die more from influenza and suicide right now than they do from the dang COVID. And let's not even talk about sports. I don't know how many parents you've talked to. My kid's playing limitless. My kid's playing hockey. My kid's playing club sport. I coached direct soccer. Tell me, what was different about what I coached this fall that I've been doing through the last 10 years? Absolutely nothing. My son has been in basketball camp at BHS since July 10th. And now, it's not safe to play basketball? You're kidding! What has changed? And the only thing that has kept my son, for sure, and I know he's not the only one, as this man said, the only thing that's kept him going is the prospect of playing the sport. He has worked his butt off all summer, constantly. I hear that ball in my dreams. But he keeps working and working and working, because you're leading him to believe that he's going to play, because you're hosting these camps. So we can just keep paying and paying and paying for them to do all these camps, but when the season's supposed to start, now you put on the brakes. So you know what? You're going to say, "No, it's not safe to play high school basketball," and then you're going to offer a basketball camp. We know it's coming. It's ridiculous. We've had so many camps with no instances. Palatine High School went back to school today. I live in 60010, and I work in 60074. Tell me that their positivity rate is 2% and ours is 6, and it's unsafe. This needs to end. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Alyssa Casey. I am a freshman at Barrington.
I am a freshman at Barrington, and I spoke a few months ago at our back-to-school rally at Citizens Park. I just would like to just touch on a few things. I spent the entirety of July preparing for our Barrington Bronquetts tryouts that would be happening in August, a few days before they cut the whole tryouts and it has yet to be rescheduled. Looking at the numbers and just the statistics on how likely it is for our age group, whether it's from preschool to 18 years old, the likelihood of actually contracting COVID and spreading it is near to none, let alone the, what you've already implemented in our schools for the three days that we went back to school. It would be nearly impossible to contract or spread COVID by going to school. I genuinely don't understand why we would have to wait some four months to get back to school. However, I did appreciate the efforts that you put in to trying to get us back with safety protocol at hand. Nothing that is happening right now, as other people have stated, 35 states going back into school. Why is our state different? Why is it that we're looking at some 4,000 students at Barrington High School? How is it that the five zip codes that goes to Barrington think about all the people that are elderly or have no children going to the school, yet their numbers affect how and who goes to school? Why is it that, why, why is it that anyone over 19, who could be living by themselves, living by their family, homeschooled for all we know, affect who is going to school? And why is it that, as part of our prestigious District 220, how is it that all our tax dollars, that what we pay for and why our taxes are so high just for living in Barrington because of the district? This is honestly a sad excuse for our education. I have been sitting at home since March 13th, waiting and waiting. The last thing I said to my eighth-grade Spanish teacher was, I'll see you in two weeks, senor. I've yet to, I mean, I won't see him because he retired, but it's been since March until October that I've been not, generally not participating in my classes because I just have no motivation whatsoever. And God bless the three days that I actually got to go to school because I felt like I actually could learn and I felt like I was improving myself and preparing myself for bigger and better things in life. So I would just say, don't be a blind sheep and don't just follow what everything else has to be said because politics have a big thing to play with this, but it's time to step up and actually figure out what's best for your district. So, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to call public comment closed. Thank you for everyone for speaking. There was a lot of emotional, oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you, Ken. Sorry.
Hi, my name's Ken Whitek. I have two kids at Prairie, and I wanted to, to share just a few things with folks here. I feel for every kid in this district right now. My kids are lucky. They're doing great. And there's other kids that are doing great. Their math scores went up. They've been doing phenomenal. It is working for some kids. And I think some people hit on some good things today to think about as an opportunity for us as a district to help in the outreach ideas, where there is kids that are struggling, to give them a better channel to find how to get to the help. The point I guess I'm trying to make is that there, there's different needs at different grade levels. The school has different needs. The middle school has different needs, and I feel for the grade school kids to try and put a first grader in front of a device for that long. But I also understand the risk. And I tell you this because in April, I got sick. I got real sick. And I was basically put in my house. My family couldn't come near me. They couldn't talk to me unless I was on a device to talk to them. I am still trying to recover from this. So for the people in the room that talk about it's okay and it's safe and we can come back, I tell you, it's real. And it does happen to people. And it happens to people that are maybe not kids, but are teachers. And if we bring kids into school and they get the teachers sick, we can't teach the kids if we don't have teachers. So there's a balance that we have to achieve. And I'm not saying we don't want to put our kids back in school. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. There's no better place for them to be. But we need to think about this in all aspects of how we can get back there and giving people the means in which to be able to do it for their situations. And I don't like when we generalize that a kid has this particular family situation. Everyone has a family situation. And not everything is going to fit for everyone. So as a community, we should be trying to help you to understand that and look for ways in which we can collectively come up with ideas to help enable the district to be the best that it can be. This district can be great. It has been great. It will be great. But we as a community have to come together, and we've got to stop tearing each other down. We can do this together. It's hard enough to run a school district in and of itself. It's even harder to do it when you have a pandemic. And I think we should all understand that and have a little bit more compassion for everybody across the situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Sorry about that. Is there anyone else? All right. Now, I'm going to call public comment closed. All right, next, we have superintendent report. Dr. Harris, do you have a report tonight?
I do. Obviously, the topic of most importance is the current school year, and we have a discussion item on the agenda later, which obviously we will be spending a significant amount of time talking about where we're at today and where we're headed. But I do have some other things I'd like to share this evening. First of all, I am excited to report that Barrington 220 once again has been named a top workplace in the Chicagoland area. This list was announced last week as a special section of the Chicago Tribune. The award was based solely on a 1920 school year survey that was given to our employees by the Tribune. Being named a top workplace is a big deal. Only 140 companies and very few school districts have made part of this list each year. So I congratulate all of our staff for completing this, this process and, and making it a great place to work. So your dedication, enthusiasm, providing an outstanding education to our students is truly second to none. So congratulations to our staff for that recognition. I also would like to take the opportunity to recognize Dr. Winkelman. And in the newsletter last week, it was also in the Harper newsletter. He was recognized as a Harper College 2020 Distinguished Alumni Honoree. Since July of 2017, Craig has been responsible for supervising, evaluating principals, overseeing district operations, and certainly been a huge help to me over the last several years. Prior to that, he spent time in the district as a principal right here at Station, assistant principal here at Station, and also a teacher at Barrington High School. So we are fortunate to have Dr. Winkelman in our district. Craig, congratulations on that special recognition as a 2020 Harper Alumni Distinguished Award winner. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. And finally, I did want to take this opportunity, it's the first board meeting we've had since the unfortunate that a few of our students and former students spoke about tonight. Barrington 220 School District is aware of an ongoing investigation by the Barrington Police Department regarding a hate crime that took place in our community last week. The Barrington Police Department asked us to share the information related to the investigation, which we did last week after, through their guidance, through a district communication. Please know that Barrington 220 stands in support of the LGBTQ community. Let us be clear, hate has no place in our school district. As a school community, we stand for respect and inclusion, as described in our Board Policy 720. Harassment, bullying, and intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Please know that we've trusted adults in all of our schools that students can go to when they have a concern. Students who don't feel comfortable reaching out to an adult can submit concerns through our Safety 220 webpage and submitting a bullying harassment form online. And we do have students that use that on a regular basis. So, you know, certainly wanted to make sure that we made our comments made public regarding that situation, but also we work collaboratively with our other organizations in our community, including the Barrington Police Department, and with those type of community situations and events. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening. Any questions?
This is Sandra. I don't have a question, but Angela, I'd like to read something.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Sandra.
Okay. I'd like to read an excerpt from a piece that was written by a Barrington High School graduate in response to the hate crime mentioned by Dr. Harris as well as Abigail and Grace. With this excerpt, I hope to educate Barrington and bring some comfort to our LGBTQ community. And I read, quote, "Being gay is not a choice. It never was. The choice lies in feeling comfortable, safe, and proud enough to show the world the real you. When someone tries to dampen that pride, it's terrifying. It's horrific. It's scary. I and countless others have experienced it in varying forms. But that pride belongs to you and no one else. Take the time to feel safe again. Lean on others to know that you are not alone right now. You have so many people that love you, support you, and will protect you, whether it's your family or your chosen family. We've got you." Unquote. And I say that the love is stronger than the hate, and I ask you all for your kindness. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thanks, Sandra. Moving on, we have some informational reports. We have two FOIA requests. Are there any questions? All right, and we have board committee reports. I believe we had finance just meet, and I think labor management met this week.
So the finance met for this meeting, and we had some previews of some things that'll be coming to the whole board soon. We talked about the levy. That's something that happens every year, where, where some of those numbers come from. That'll be coming up. We talked about D sub bonds and how that can look, so that'll be coming to the board soon. And we also talked about a small portion of how the budget's going at this time. We've talked about that at every meeting because of, because of the strange circumstances of the year, the budget is, you know, hard to predict, hard to follow, and things are changing all the time. So, you know, we haven't spent money in some areas, but we may spend that money later. Dave Bein talked about how there's uncertainty in Illinois about funding and our future because of the way the election went, and that's something to think about. And that, you know, if we spend money on transportation, it takes time to get that repaid. So these are some of the moving pieces in our budget in that we, you know, may have some money set aside that we didn't spend, but may have some falling short in the next, you know, nine months. So to be, to think about being conservative at this time. Where's are available to the board on the finance committee agenda to take a closer look at all of that? And we'll keep revisiting these issues, so. Did I miss anything? Kevin?
No.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Labor management. Dr. Harris, Dr. Winkelman met last week with teachers, union reps. They are seeking clarity on the metrics, that we're using the health metrics in particular, and we're meeting again next week. That's about it.
All right. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Very good. All right, so looking at the consent agenda, we have minutes from open session on August 3rd, 2020, open and closed minutes from October 6th, 2020. And also included in tonight's consent agenda is a, is this a revised personnel report? Yes.
Yes.
And the authorization to declare the listed property as surplus and authorize their disposal. Are there any questions from the board? All right. Roll call, please.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the petition to annex 36 East Dundee Road?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Dr. Harris, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, we discussed it at the facilities committee meeting and reviewed it. This is the beginning steps of annexing the property that we bought about a year ago, right next to Prairie in the ELC. Currently, if you remember, it's in Cook County. It is currently unincorporated. And if, as we begin to think about how to best use that property on that campus, I would be best that we begin that process, and that's what this resolution here is this evening, that we move forward with the board's permission, with the Village of Barrington, to annex that property, so then we can begin considerations to what the work is going to hopefully happen to improve the traffic scenario around those two facilities. So that's what this is about, and if there's any questions, Dave or I will be certainly happy to answer.
Got it. All right. Any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Onto the big topic of the night, the 2021 school year update. So, Dr. Harris?
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Fuller to come up here this evening and, and begin part of the data that we would like to share with the community in regard to the hybrid that took place, the six days that we were able to do it a couple of weeks ago. It's obviously very important to look at this information. We had shared the details of this with the board in advance, and so Matt is going to summarize that, to look at some of the data that in tune then will inform where we're at with our current status and some critical decisions that we need to make at this point for moving forward. So as soon as Matt gets set up, we will get started. It's good. It's all yours, Matt.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. If everyone could take a look at the big screens, we have about three areas we'd like to cover tonight. First of all, the in-building and at-home attendance during the hybrid learning time. Then we're going to talk about the bus transportation. There were some patterns. And then finally, we'll turn it over to Dr. Harris and talk about some critical decisions that we need to consider for the evening. To start, in-building and at-home attendance during hybrid learning. During the, the week and a half that we were in school, October 19th through 20th, we noticed that a lot of the students who indicated that they would participate in the hybrid program opted to stay home instead. The data that we're going to be covering covers the, we picked the first A day and the first B day of October 19th and the, and the 22nd. And then the next week, we, we use both of those days as our data points. So as a district, 32%, 32, a little over 32% said that they would be staying home, and 67.5% would be coming in. In the first week of October, in the first week of hybrid learning, we actually had only 60%, a little over 60% come in, and the following week, that dropped as a district to 55%. I'm going to go over each of the buildings now, and you'll see that each of the different grade levels had very different results. The first one, the high school, the questionnaire, the students responded that 62.9% would be coming, and instead, that first week of hybrid learning, only about half, 52, came. And then the following week, that dropped by 4, by 10%, down to 42% who arrived at school, who came into school during hybrid week. The middle schools were a little closer to what we expected. 67% at Prairie said that they would be coming. Only 59.9 showed up on the first week, and the second week, that dropped to 52.8. Similar pattern at Station. 70.4 said that they would, they would be coming. 62.6 arrived, and then it went down to 55 the second week. 62.6 arrived, and then it went down to 55 the second week. The elementary schools were a lot closer to the projections. So, the questionnaire responses, all were very close to what actually, the attendance that we actually saw. So, 82.1% we were expecting at lines, and 79, 8.9 arrived, and then that following week, it was very similar, 78.5. Same thing at Barbara Rose. 62.7 reported they would come. 61.4 showed up, and 60.9 the following week. I won't read all the numbers for all the elementary schools. Suffice to say, they're all very similar. What the students who arrived at school during hybrid were the same, were very close to the levels that we were expecting. And in most cases, in all the elementaries, that second week dropped slightly, but not anywhere near like the difference was at the elementary and middle schools. Of course, Sunny Hill was different. That school remained closed the entire time, so they were home, the full population was at home that whole time. And then the transition program was the same, came out exactly the same. It's a very small population of about 20 students. So, in conclusion of the attendance, less students did attend school the second week of hybrid at all the schools except Grove. And the variances at the high school were larger, were much larger the second week than they were the first week, about 10% change. Middle school had about a 7% variance the first week, and it increased to 15 that second week. And the elementary schools were all about the same. They were around 5% average, and only one school, Grove, had about a 10% variance from what we were expecting. Any questions or comments about the attendance?
Any questions?
Good question. Matt, do you have any idea why you saw that variance?
We don't. We don't know exactly why. The first, all we can say is that we know parents kept their [BLEEP] at home for that between the time they answered the survey and then October 19.
No.
Might it have anything to do with them learning during the first week that the second week was gonna be one day instead of two, and that it was ending after that until the ninth?
It's possible.
Yeah. It's possible. The rates were rising.
Oh, sorry. We have to keep the board meeting going now, but I appreciate, and I appreciate your comment, Mike.
I have one other question. Did everyone complete the survey initially, or were there some that didn't answer either way?
The initial survey was not completed by everyone, but those who did not complete, we called them individually. So, we did have nearly 100% completion rate because of the calls that we made for the next several. It was about two weeks of calls that we made.
Are there any other questions or comments? I think, you know, kind of going off what Mike said, I think, you know, I, this didn't really surprise me. I think that elementary kids obviously are just thirsty to learn, get in person, you know, whether it's gonna be a couple hours, a few days, whatever. So, and then I do think that with the, you know, the drop-off in the second week, at least, I can tell you at our house, you know, we, we just had some scheduling issues, 'cause we thought that, you know, she would be going the latter part of the week, and so we had a scheduling issue on the day she was supposed to go. So, you know, I think that there's a lot of circumstances that, you know, created some variance here. So, but thank you. All right. Okay. You wanna move on to the bus?
Next section, I'd like to talk about bus transportation. And again, these are just the numbers that we, that we observed, and we were tracking through our, our system where when students enter a bus, they scan on with their student IDs. So, I use the same, I use the same data as I did for the first part. And the ridership reporting, I used October 19th and 23rd, the A day and the B day of that first week, the first A day, the first B day, and then I use both days on that second week. So, what we discovered as a district is that we had, we were expecting 3,280 students to ride the bus, and we had a third of our students ride during those two weeks, and it went up slightly the second week. So, about 1,000 students district-wide rode the bus that first week, and about 1,100 the second week. Going by schools, again, the levels were very, very different if you were to compare. At the high school, 983 students indicated that they would be riding the bus, and only 178 rode. And then that second week, it was 211, so it went up slightly. At the middle schools, they were 557 at Prairie, and then that was about 169, and then that one went down at that school. Similarly, at Station, about a third rode the bus. And then at the elementary schools, the bus ridership really matched whether or not the school has special ed programs. The schools with special ed programs had higher riderships than the schools that do not have special ed programs. So, these are the numbers for lines, the numbers for rows, Countryside, Grove, Huff, North Barrington, Roslin Road, Early Learning Center, higher ridership was more consistent. So, the high school had about 20% ridership. Middle schools were at about 30%, and the elementary schools were between 30 and 50, mostly depending on whether the school had a special ed program. And then, again, there were slightly more bus riders during the second week. Questions or comments on transportation?
I have more of a comment. My goal is to get kids back in the school on a permanent basis. With that being said, this is a significant cost for our community from a transportation standpoint, and I encourage the staff and our parents, if they're not gonna use the bus system, please allow us to reroute those buses and save the community significant dollars.
If you accept.
I agree. Yeah. I think that, you know, that's something that we should talk about later as well, as far as how to structure returning to school and use of transportation effectively.
Absolutely. And the board is very aware that, you know, transportation cannot be denied to any student that is eligible to receive it. And so, that's obviously very, very important. If we are able to continue into the future, we certainly will monitor that. As you know, they swipe on and off. We're able to gauge what's going on on a daily basis. But when we, we would obviously like, you know, parents to, you know, really be honest. Are you gonna use it or not? And I do believe a lot of people may have selected it just in case type of scenario. I don't know that, but I'm speculating there completely. But I think that's something we'll be much more diligent on in the near future, and as we, if we use the transportation again, and following up immediately within a week or two, and really determine whether or not we can consolidate some things further. 'Cause I do know principals reported that we've had a very light ridership at several buildings on certain routes, and that played out in the exact numbers when we went through all of the data. So, it's real important, because it will give us an opportunity to maybe pivot some of those dollars into other purposes, which we'll talk about here in a little while.
I have one suggestion, because when you opt in for the buses, you don't know what your, what time your pickup and drop-off will be at that point, and then you get that later, right, as a parent?
Yeah. When we reduce bus routes, that just creates, you know, that you have to get time to adjust, so it'll be different drop-offs, different pickups, and all that. So, that's why it takes time to reroute the system, notify everybody involved, you know, you know, and it takes two or three days to.
No problem. I would just suggest that after bus times are sent out, that we do a confirmation follow-up. Do you remain interested in, you know, the bus, or if not, let, and just.
We will continue to monitor this very closely as we, if we move back into regular routes on a daily basis.
Yeah. I think this is a great opportunity to work with the community. I know that so many community members come and say, "How can we help?" And this is a great way, you know?
If you're not using it, please tell us, and that's very helpful. So, we do, we will be asking for that a little more diligently moving forward if we don't see the use.
All right. I just had one other comment.
Penny, can I ask one question?
Sure. Go ahead.
And I apologize, I am having a hard time hearing the board members on the wings, if you will, so I apologize that somebody asked this question already, but is there an opportunity to, for parents to go in and change their selection of choice on the transportation?
There is. We've had parents change their mind both on attendance, whether, whether or not they want to attend distance or hybrid, and also on transportation just by calling the district.
So, Penny, we will continue to communicate that if we re-engage in the hybrid, okay? And really be more diligent about it this time around to try and, we didn't know what to expect, so obviously this time around would be much more diligent. Obviously, riding the bus is a unique experience right now, like everything else.
Okay. Thanks.
I just, just wanted to add that I had different feedback. I think it's really interesting that the first week was very robust with attendance of students, and then the second week, it dropped. And I'm sure there's lots of reasons I wish we could know, 'cause it would be super helpful going forward, but I got mixed feedback, you know, emails from people saying, you know, "This was a wonderful thing. Why didn't it keep going?" And emails saying, you know, "The numbers of COVID were going up, and so I backed off, and I, my kids stayed home the second week." So, it's, it's, it's a really difficult thing to figure out, you know, what everyone's thinking. There's, there's many different views going on here, and you can't please everyone. It's so hard.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Harris.
So, at this point here, I wanna spend just a couple minutes talking about where we're at, and then obviously, the board has been providing quite a bit of information for us to have a discussion about some very critical pieces of information that I need direction on as we begin to move forward. So, where are we at right now? Obviously, the education of our kids is the primary goal of any school district, and we will continue to do the very best we can to educate every child, regardless of their choice, in, you know, in our school district. During a pandemic, it is a, you know, significant challenge. Everybody knows that. All of the factors, you know, that are all involved, we've all been living this now for a long time. And, and I certainly empathize with people here this evening, the people that have sent emails. I know they're real. It's difficult, and, you know, I've been doing this for 34 years. I didn't go into education to have kids sitting in their bedroom at home, okay? Our teachers didn't either. Our teachers love being with the kids. And clearly, that is, you know, what we need to try the best we can to do to figure out moving forward. So, therefore, you know, right now, where are we? We have been on an adaptive pause. We're about a week into it, and we had notified the community originally that we would reconsider the situation this coming Monday, November 9. On this Monday, just two days ago, obviously, based on our current health metrics and looking at the community spread, we, we are continuing to look at very, you know, conflicting numbers. In other words, things are not good. The spread is increasing, the positivity rate is increasing, and so therefore, we're at a critical point here, right? And so, I asked the community to wait two days until we were able to have some discussions this evening to determine if the board wanted to consider some additional options on how we could move forward before we decide whether or not to wait another week until November 16 to see on the adaptive pause, or whether or not to take a different direction altogether. So, obviously, a lot of our parents and staff are waiting to hear where we're headed, so it is important tonight that I receive the direction that we'll talk about here in a minute, to be able to plan accordingly and inform the community, the staff, and parents and students where we're headed here, not only in the short term, but also in the long term. You know, when we look at what's required of the superintendent and the board, there's always a gray area, and then there's some very clear responsibilities of what the roles are. We all know that, right? As superintendent, it's my job to run and manage the school district, provide the education for the students, hire, recommend hiring staff, and implementing the curriculum that's approved by the board. While doing that, following all district policies that are set by the board, also following all laws in the state of Illinois and the federal government, as well as enforcing all employment contracts that we have, not only with our individual employees, but also our collective bargaining units, as well as managing the budget that the board approves and sets each and every year. So, these are all key responsibilities of the superintendent, right, and my staff. Everybody knows that. The board also has very distinct statutory responsibilities. One of them is to set policy, all right? I believe we're at a critical point here about talking about, I can only go so far with my responsibilities without board direction on some of the policies you have in place. I also, you know, manage on liability. What's that mean? And being able to make sure that we're following all those employee contracts, we're following all the rules and laws of the state and federal government. So, therefore, that's part of my job, to make sure I do that. And without further direction, and that's what I've been doing up to this point. We'll have a discussion here tonight whether or not the board wants to move forward in a little different direction, and certainly, in the wishes of the majority of the board, we will move forward accordingly, either stay the path we're on, or maybe pivot and head a different direction. Also, the board approves the budget. A budget is another key item here. This board, for over 20 years in this district, has been fiscally responsible. It was one of the key things we've been talking about for a long, long time here, and it's, you should be very proud of that. And, and, but at times, when there are very difficult circumstances, there is a reason why we have fund bounds. There is a reason why maybe we need to do some things differently. If we can manage this pandemic inside of our current budget, that's great. And if the board tells me, "Stay within the budget," that's fine. But I also, you know, wanna have a discussion tonight about some latitude. Is there gonna be, would the board be open to some latitude about moving, possibly, for the first time in a very, very long time, actually have a deficit spending situation within the year? Possible. I'm not saying it has to happen. Could it happen if we were able to do some things to be able to move forward in an effective way? So, those are board responsibilities, and those are the things that we need to talk about. So, as I said, we're at a very pivotal point, and, and, you know, so there, I laid out exactly, you know, the items that I would ask for some board direction on this evening, and I posed four questions to the board that I shared with you last week that I ask you to think about with quite a bit of detail behind each one. So, here's the four questions, and just for those that might be watching at home or here in the audience, so you fully understand what those four questions are that I need as superintendent from the board. One, how much exposure and liability is the board willing to consider related to the risk of the virus spread, potential legal claims? That's with students, parents, and employees, or loss of toward immunity? And we'll have a conversation about what that means. So, I need that direction, because that's some of the key lever, on what type of risk level is the board willing to endure if we are able to pivot and do something different than what we've been doing up to this point? Number two, if we continue to follow the Public Health Department guidance, should we consider adding, adjusting our metrics to further inform our decisions to return to our facilities? Are there other things you wanna consider? Are there things that you wanna do different? Should we not, should we just abandon the metrics, whatever the case may be, and just follow ISBE and IDPH guidelines, okay? So, there's, there's a range of things here, and again, that we need to have a discussion around that topic. Number three, should we consider educational plans and calendar adjustments related to the pandemic? That, one of the things that we have worked very hard to do, and I wanna commend our principals, our teachers, you know, our staff in the district, is to maintain the integrity of our educational programs the best we can in a pandemic. However, there are some possibilities of doing some things different, and I wanna have that discussion tonight. We don't have to make any decisions on that, but I need to know where to spend my staff's time, because, and that would clearly might look differently than what we have, the board-approved curriculum and the board-approved instructional programming that we've been familiar with. So, maybe we'll do some things different. So, I wanna have that discussion. Also, the calendar, the board approves the calendar. On that particular item, that's about looking here, coming through the holidays, do we wanna maybe take a look at our calendar and do something different? You know, a lot of you know, universities are doing things differently. I know some school districts are starting to have these conversations about a calendar. Should we have an extended winter break and do some things different in the springtime than we typically have done this district? If the board's interested in that, then we would certainly spend time on that, working with our collective bargaining units, and come back with some ideas for board consideration. And finally, should we consider solutions outside of the FY21 budget? Or stay within the budget? You know, I mean, again, there's probably a little bit of a gray area there and a fine line. and a fine line about where our managing our expenses, as Leah mentioned tonight, the finance committee looked at that, where we're at today. There probably are some opportunities where we're going to be underspending. I am concerned about our revenues as well, and whether or not our anticipated revenues are actually going to be, you know, met from the state of Illinois and from other sources as well. So, you know, we have a lot of things to consider in relation to the budget, and, and what level of risk in that area that the board is willing to entertain to try and manage educational programming during this pandemic. So, those are the four questions, just to frame it up a little bit. The critical one, there's a reason why they're in this order, the critical one to me is number one, okay? And I really would, would like the board to weigh in, provide your thoughts, your thinking, and related to a couple specific items in related, you know, relation to exposure to liability and, and risk. What we're talking about here is what level of risk is the board willing to consider as we move forward? First, you know, the one thing that's the most pressing at this point is the current discrepancy between the IHSA and the Illinois Department of Public Health. I think we're all very familiar with that. That one came up last week. Heard a few people speak about it tonight. We've had a few emails on it. All along, we have said we would follow the IHSA, you know, schedules, and we also said we would follow the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines. Well, now they're at odds, right? And so every school district that has high school basketball right now in the state of Illinois is going to have to make a decision. And so there's risk involved here, right? And, and so what type of level of risk? This is what I'm talking about, a very specific example, but, but it also, I believe, impacts the next step, which is the broader component. You know, should we, you know, consider additional risk and continue our hybrid mode? We have some, you know, data that we shared here tonight. We also have a dashboard that we have on our website that shows what's happened in our buildings, you know, since we've had students back in the buildings. We also have had kids on our campuses, in camps, in, in activities. We've had them there for instructional purposes. We've had special education students in our buildings. And, you know, the, the spread, because people have been in the building, has been minimal. It has, okay, up to this point. And even during those six days, we did not see any significant outbreak situations. Have we had an increase in reported cases over the last few days? We have. But that's more of a reflection of what's going on in the community and around us in the region, not necessarily what's happening in our buildings. I do believe our mitigation efforts have been significant. They have worked well. And, you know, again, our staff did an excellent job putting those in place. Our students followed things appropriately. Our kids were well-prepared when they entered the building to follow the expectations. Was it perfect? No. Do we, do we get better each day at it? Yes, we did. And I believe that, you know, we're in a good place there. Now, the issue though, is where are we at? You know, the, the health metrics say that we've been, that we've had chosen to follow, obviously indicate a pretty significant increase in COVID cases in our area. But, but also, I do believe with additional data points, we have to take a look at what's actually happening in our schools at this time. So I, I'm going to stop here. I kind of framed up the conversation, and I really would like, you know, individual board members to, you know, weigh in here, and, and I'd like to have that discussion to see if there's interest in considering these additional liabilities and risks and, you know, moving forward. We also would have, as Mike mentioned, Sandra and Mike participated in the Labor Management Committee, which is a committee that we meet with on a quarterly basis with our collective bargaining groups. We had a conversation last week with the Teachers Association as well as the Support Staff Group. They did share with us significant concerns and encouraged us to continue to follow the health metrics. That was the gist of that conversation. So I just share that. That is another piece of this for the board's consideration. We have another meeting scheduled with them coming up next week, and certainly, you know, agreed to continue that conversation. So I'm going to, again, I'm going to stop here, and I certainly open up to the board to provide your thoughts and direction around this. How much exposure and liability and risk are you willing to entertain as we think about moving forward?
All right. Well, let's start, we have a lot to unpack. So let's start with, Dr. Harris has mentioned two situations specifically. We've got basketball, and then returning to hybrid learning. So I will open this up. We can either just talk about basketball first, and then talk about hybrid, or if you, your comments want to encompass both, feel free.
On that point, I, I understand how important the sports are to every family who participates. And basketball happens to be the one in the strange crosshairs right now. I mean, other sports have been moved or modified. I think the whole being in school issue is, I mean, if you look at the numbers of people impacted alone, it's just, you know, almost 9,000 people compared to, you know, 50. And I just think we might want to approach this conversation not with basketball first, and certainly related conversation, but I think the more important issue is being in school or not, and how.
Mike, are you, I'm just curious, are you willing to take on additional risk? I'm just curious.
Yeah, sure. No, I mean, like Gavin, I think we should be doing everything we can to have the kids learning in school if they, their family chooses that. They should also have the choice. They also have the choice not to. And that actually helps people to manage the risk for themselves. And it also lowers the risk pool, just from a numbers standpoint, of the people who do want to go back in person. And I don't know what that number is anymore. I think the survey we did last summer was 70/30, and now it's, it might be less. The number, the cases go up, people might change their mind, so.
Might.
I don't know what that number is, but obviously, we have to manage it well. So we need to engage and communicate with the community to get the data we need, some of it. And that means the teachers too, by the way, when I say the community. It's the students and the teachers.
I mean, I tend to agree with Mike. You know, I mean, in my opinion, COVID is not going away. So as a district and community, we have to find a way to live with it safely. You know, I think that, you know, as I've said in the past, I believe educating our kids is one of the most essential businesses we have in the United States. And, you know, I've asked on multiple occasions for Lake County to be transparent in their data. There's no data available that, you know, to support their spreading going on in schools and other events. What really gets me going is our surrounding towns, states, and quite frankly, other countries have found a safe way to reopen schools. And I truly believe it's been our goal from the get-go to get our kids safely back in the building. And albeit, it's a pretty small subset over the last six days that we were in hybrid, I think we did a darn good job. Not only the staff from a certified and other, but the, the kids did a great job following protocol. So I think there is a way to move toward a hybrid role that, that keeps the kids and, quite frankly, the staff safe.
Penny, you want to jump in?
I'm Penny.
Go ahead, Penny.
I have a question specifically about basketball first, okay? If I remember right, you sought information from Clic, the insurance company, as well as our attorneys on this, on this particular topic. Can you remind me what they said?
That is correct. We, we obviously, when we're looking at liability and risk, obviously, we have to consult, you know, those two groups. One is our liability insurance carrier, which is Clic. We're a part of a consortium with other school districts. And so they did draft an opinion letter. And in that opinion letter, directly related to the basketball issue, they simply said, we will not cover any COVID-related claims, and, you know, and especially related to if you choose to have your school participate in high school basketball at this time, going against the Illinois Department of Public Health recommendations. So that was the insurance pool attorney, Penny. And then also from our legal counsel that we use, they also, in their opinion-
I think we should keep this covered under attorney-client privilege?
I'll just say they were consistent-
Okay.
-with the insurance carrier, okay? Yep?
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I guess I had thought that I could ask more questions about that in open session. No?
No. It's okay, but, you know, there is, you know, I mean, yes, you can. It depends on what it is. We'll just be careful here. Go ahead. Because, again, it's all about pending litigation, so, and Penny, you know that.
Was there, was there, if I remember right, there was something about, you know, we've been, it's been suggested that people are willing to sign waivers in order to participate, or, I'm trying to remember if that was addressed.
It was addressed in a follow-up question. And in that response, waivers are okay, but it clearly does not protect the district from the liability claims. Anybody can file suit. And it really would be about more that willful and wanton risk that's involved here, and whether, and whether or not you're exposing somebody to an unsafe situation. So what they said is, a waiver is not a cure-all for this situation, in a summary piece. It can be done, but it's certainly not going to, you know, prevent any claims or potential claims if something were to happen.
I am just sticking with basketball for a second. I wanted to talk about schools also, but is there any unity within the MSL, the Midsuburban League, in terms of basketball? Consistency, unity, whether it's liability, or what, what, what the other schools are going to be doing for this coming basketball season?
Yes. Over the last week, since the IHSA put out this information, I have been in contact a couple different times with our districts that are in our, in the Midsuburban League, which is the high school athletic conference that we are a member of. And I know that the two superintendents have conveyed to me that they have significant concerns as well related to this. However, they also really want to find a way to, as I do, to have our kids play basketball, under safe conditions, in an appropriate way, okay? So I, you know, I'm not going to speak for them. That, they have their own board meeting and their own decision to make. What we did agree upon is that, as the three superintendents, that we would work collaboratively to try and, you know, because you want to play somebody. I mean, we could sit here tonight and say, okay, Barrington High School, go ahead and play basketball. There may not be any school around us to play. There may not be. There may, there may not be. We don't know at this point. I do know one of the other conferences nearby today had a, you know, conversation around this, have agreed not to, all of them in that conference have agreed not to participate at this time. But they also agreed that they would try to find a conference schedule at a different time in the school year. So, you know, again, I'm not going to speak for them either, but I just know these conversations are going on all around us, throughout the suburban area and all over the state of Illinois. You know, obviously, with the IHSA and the Illinois Department of Health not getting on the same page on this particular sport, it's become very, very difficult to try and navigate. Every other sport and activity, we've been on the same page on. It's worked great up to this point. And even our other winter sports right now, they were on the same page on. And, and nothing's been canceled. We have a lot of activities that went on in the fall. We're going to have several activities going on here in the springtime, or, I mean, in the winter. But obviously, wrestling was another sport that got moved toward, till later in the year. But basketball is where there was a disconnect between the two organizations. So that's why we're having the conversation. So a long answer to a quick question, Barry, but I, you know, again, I'm not going to speak for those other districts other than we agreed to, to work hard to be consistent with one another, so our kids would have an opportunity to play.
All right. You don't quite know where that consistency lies yet.
I don't. Their board meetings are next week.
So do we have an ongoing dialogue with the conference on how it might work? We might change schedules or anything like that?
We have not gotten that into it yet.
Possibly.
I think we all need to gauge the level of risk our boards are willing to, you know, with this particular disconnect, right? Because you've got the public health department saying it's not safe to play, but you've got the IHSA saying you should go ahead and play, okay? So hence the issue.
Okay. And the willful and wanton standard that you mentioned, that is the standard whereby the district would not be covered by the current Tort Immunity Act, correct?
If we were to have claim, anytime we're sued, for an injury, for any type of a negligent act, it's always, that's the standard. And that's been litigated for many, many decades about willful and wanton neglect of, you know, duty, right?
Of the standard of care.
That's right.
Okay.
So, and, you know, our insurance carriers said they're not covering it, and our attorneys, you know, complied with it or agreed with that opinion. And so therefore, that's what we were told, but certainly the board, you know, certainly could assume that risk if you, if you would want to do that. But understanding, we'd be on our own, you know, if we did have, you know, situations that ended up creating problems.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're, we keep moving back to basketball. So maybe we just all opine on basketball and then move on to-
Sure. One thing I liked about the IHSA opinion was they actually referenced neighboring states and how they're doing things that appear to be working. And they talked about the social, emotional, you know, impact and, and needs of the kids who play. So, I mean, the data that they relied on, I think they have a sports-focused subcommittee that they referenced as well. I'm sorry, a medical-focused subcommittee. And I believe they used some data from Wisconsin. I don't think, know if it was the same data that was raised here in public comment, but, so, I mean, obviously, they're an organization, we have followed their precedent in the past. We've followed their advice. It's the precedent without exception. And I get it, they've always been aligned with Illinois, and now they're not. So that's where the risk is, right?
That's correct.
I have a question. And it's a big what-if, but let's say half of the schools say, we're going to play basketball, and half of the schools say we're not. Do we have two seasons? What happens? What, what would likely, will we play in Wisconsin? Like, what would, what's the possibilities, you know? Or, or is there, who knows?
Well, obviously, there's nothing to, there's no-
I know. It's all, it's all new.
I can only explain to you what I can speculate is going to occur. I do believe some schools, high schools in the state are going to play boys' and girls' basketball, okay? I do believe many high schools in the state are not going to play girls' and boys' basketball, right? One, regardless of where we would go, and I was talking with Mr. McWilliams and Mr. Optus today about this very topic. You know, let's, you know, we were playing it out either way, right? If we participate in the state series, which that starts on November 16th, that's the first day we, you know, kids can practice, that's when contact starts, and then we would, our first game is scheduled the last week in November in both the boys' and the girls' seasons. That is following the IHSA calendar, and it ends in March with the state tournament with both boys and girls, right? What I believe some other, and again, I'm just hearing this in superintendents' conversations that I'm engaged in daily in the area. I do believe for districts that choose not to follow the IHSA calendar this year, which what that means is they won't participate in the state series, they won't run their schedule right now, that they will probably work hard to have a schedule later in the school year, in the springtime, when they believe the conditions will be more favorable. That's what I'm hearing. But again, that's just speculation, but nobody's come out and announced anything. I do think that's, you know, something we would certainly consider if we choose not to move forward at this time, that we would continue to look for opportunities for our kids to be engaged. Now, as it stands as of right now, just so the board is aware, we're already signed up for basketball. You know, our athletic director submits that stuff at the beginning of the year. We sign up for all the activities every year. It's really kind of a, you know, simple thing. And with everything we have, we sign up and we participate. So right now, we're, we're signed up, okay? But, you know, it depends on how we want to move forward, given the conditions we're under, right? Whether or not we would then withdraw, or whether we would continue. So at this time, you know, we're, we're still scheduled to start those practices on November 16th, you know, a week from Monday. So that's where it stands. But obviously, there's this significant issue here with the recommendations from the public health department that says we shouldn't be playing basketball.
And, and do you have staff already lined up to, to coach?
Yeah, I mean, coaches are hired, sure. They've been doing camps up to this point. You actually heard a couple people mention it here tonight. I mean, we've been, we've been doing it safely. And if we were to- it here tonight, I mean, we've been, we've been doing it safely, and if we were to start up on the 16th as scheduled, we would do it safely, okay? We would continue with those mitigation efforts that we have in place, with the social distancing, the wearing of masks, I know that's being discussed, there's a range of safety factors that's being considered, you know, and we have had some recent challenges in some of our sporting activities, where we've had some positive cases at the high school level. So, it is, you know, playing sports is, you know, one of the more challenging scenarios when it comes to transmission of viruses, right? Not just this one, anything, and, what's that?
We know that when we make that statement.
Absolutely, alternative, I mean...
In sports, though?
Oh, you know, we take, I'd like to take wrestling, for example, I mean, we take, you know, we take significant precautions to clean the mats, to use all types of hygiene-related things, we do the same thing in other sports as well. I mean, so, now, I'm not talking about COVID-19 here, I'm talking about all types of different scenarios, I don't talk about COVID-19, talking about all types of, you know, cold and flu season always is a challenge, you know, this time of year, I defer to Barry, I'm not, I'm not a medical doctor.
The closer you're physically in contact, the greater chance you're going to pick up something. I mean, with or without a mask, masks certainly help, but, but, you know...
Can Barry speak a little louder?
Sorry?
There's other states, other schools that are playing, and I just don't know, we make these comments, and I just don't know if there's data to specifically support around COVID-19.
I just know that we always take precautions.
There's no COVID data yet.
No, no COVID, not that I'm aware of.
So, Brian, I sent you an email today with an article of the National Federation of State High School Associations about the fall sports season, and how that kind of played out, you know, related to COVID across the country, and I don't know if you had time to look at that.
I didn't, I saw it, but I did not read it.
But, they talked a little bit about some of the creative things that schools did with their season schedule, like, having a playoff sort of thing, and allowing them to finish conference games after that, even, unplayed, stuff like what you were just talking about, and they also touched on, you know, which, there were groups of states that did it one way, and other groups that were doing it differently, so, I just thought that was interesting. There is some, some recent data out there, just based on the fall season.
So, Penny and Sandra, I want to give you guys both a chance to talk, or ask any questions, or give any opinions, and Penny, I'm sorry if you got cut off earlier. Did you have anything else?
No, I'll let Sandra go. Well, some of my questions were already asked, Penny asked some, and I think the question, another question I had was what happens if we decide not to play basketball now, which I think Dr. Harris, you addressed, what could potentially happen by holding basketball at another time? If it does get held at another time, would students likely need to choose between sports? Do we have enough room in the schedule? I know wrestling has moved, what else has moved?
Football's moved.
Boys volleyball.
Volleyball.
Girl, I'm sorry, girls volleyball. It would definitely create some challenges for, I'm sure, for some students that are dual-sport athletes, there's no doubt about it. You know, these, obviously, these seasons are spread out for a reason, and, you know, if we double them up, whether it be in the, you know, spring, or in the late, late spring, early summer, you know, the IHSA actually extended their schedule this year for this purpose, it definitely would create some difficult choices I know a few of our athletes would have to make, if we delayed it. It's already going to happen, you know, we're probably going to have some conflicts, like with, for example, with wrestling and baseball, and some of the things that have already now doubled up.
Is football still on track to start after the first of the year? Wasn't that the plan?
Yes, football is scheduled, I'm looking at Steve, late February, is that correct, Steve? Yeah, late February, and it'll go through first of May, I believe it is, something around those lines. Correct.
Is that, is that something the IHSA has to come back and weigh in on again?
Well, they will, they will have to either postpone it again, or say we're going, or whatever the case may be at that particular time. But that's where they currently have it scheduled. Wrestling was moved completely toward the end of the square. Steve, when was volley, girls volleyball, was it in that same time?
And not a competition mode, does that have the same liability?
Well, I don't know, I mean, you've seen the information, I will say this, I'll tell you where the increased risk comes in, and this is in, I've had conversations with our counsel on this, it's really, we feel very confident, which kind of goes into the next conversation we're going to have, that when we're into complete control of what's happening in our schools, with our students, and our staff, with the mitigation efforts that we are managing and maintaining, you know, there's a, there's a lower level of risk, right? But when we invite students from other communities and other schools to participate, or we go and do that there, you know, that's where the risk expands, and that's what was conveyed to me in an individual conversation, you saw that referenced, and the documents that I shared with you as well.
So, this is Penny. I, I would, my preference would be, if I'm going to increase any liability or take risks, to take risks for the greater good, not to say the sports aren't important, I do think that they offer a lot to the kids that play, but I would rather focus our energy on getting kids back in school. The other thing I wanted to ask Brian is, you know, we typically ask you, do you have a recommendation? So, I'm going to throw that out there, do you have a recommendation on this?
Which one?
On the basketball. I'm trying to work my way through the list.
You know, that's a tough one, because all along, every, you know, as I've been saying since the very beginning, that we would follow IHSA, you know, and their guidelines and expectations, I've also said, we're going to continue to follow the health department's recommendations and ISB's guidelines as well. Obviously, there are conflict here. So, it's a tough one, I, I know you all know this, I was a varsity girls basketball coach, I coached sophomore boys' basketball for many years when I was a teacher, I played high school basketball, I know the value of it, it's significant, I love it personally, okay? So this is, it's an extremely emotional, you know, I know the value that sports have for kids, I lived it, my own kids lived it, I lived it, I understand it. You know, it is difficult, and what I would suggest at this time, if you're asking my recommendation, that we pause in playing the schedule with the IHSA, however, I would, and I had a conversation with Mr. McWilliams and Mr. Optus today, that we still have our kids, you know, come to the first day of practice on November 16th, and I continue to work with the other two districts to see if we can collaboratively find a path forward for our kids to participate. I don't know if it would be this fall, and I don't know if it would be, you know, at a later time in the school year. But again, that, if you're asking me tonight, that's where my thoughts are at this time. You know, we can, we can practice for two weeks, you know, and until after Thanksgiving, before the first games are, and then, and we'll have a better direction with 211 and 214, our conference at least, and have an indication of anybody else that's even willing to play in the area, and then we could certainly, you know, make a decision, you know, down the road. But again, if we do that, I just, the board has to give me that, you know, direction, that, you know, at least the majority of the board, saying, okay, let's move forward in that way. So Penny, does that answer your question?
To some degree, let me restate to you what I think I heard you say, that we're not, we're not technically making a decision tonight to move forward with IHSA play for basketball, however, we would have the coach, and coaches, students, all practice together as if the season were starting, and let them practice for a few weeks, because then there's a tournament, but then, you know, then, and I don't know who we is, is it, is it the board, is you, you know, assess the situation then, and make a decision, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, but I also want the board to weigh in here, and agree whether or not you're supportive of taking on that additional risk at this point, when the Illinois Health Department, Public Health Department, has said, don't do it. So, I mean, yes, that is correct, Penny.
But what are we, are we, okay, I'm unclear then about what we're committing to, because what I'm, I may be willing to say, okay, go ahead and practice, but is that in violation of the Health Department?
They considered it a high-risk sport, so...
But we've been running the camp.
We've been doing drills, we've been doing a very controlled environment up to this point. And they are playing, with masks, with precautions.
And we could continue in that controlled environment, right? Even these first few weeks?
We would, that is correct.
Masks, whatever they are.
Go ahead.
I, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, go ahead Penny, finish your comments, and Mike was going to jump in here.
I'm sorry. I've had high school athletes, and I do have concerns over the situation you described with when our kids go to another school, and when other schools come to our school, because I have had personal experience with things that have gone well, with my own kids, and with visiting teams, and I'm just not sure we can control that environment for those other, for those other teams, or control the environment we would be going to. I'll just put that concern out there.
Thank you. Okay, Mike?
Just going to mention that it's done with protocols, and they lower the risk, and you also have to look at your risk, your population here, that may or may not actually contract it, and their risk level. So I talked to someone at University of Illinois, from the basketball program, you know, the Big Ten, and U of I are moving forward, and they've made changes to their scheduling, and their travel, and their entry and exit from facilities, and many things, but they're moving forward, so...
And they're testing their players on a regular basis.
Correct.
All the time.
It's part of the protocol.
Yes, that is correct.
And where they sit on the bench, I mean, where other people sit in proximity, so, you know, fans there or not, so, there are things you can do to lower the risk.
And we've been doing that very successfully in our camps and our athletic events all fall, we have. And I certainly commend our athletic department, and our coaches, I mean, they've done a great job with that.
So I have a concern, can you hear me?
Is this working?
Yeah.
So if we practice for two weeks, and the COVID rates go higher, and we decide that it's unsafe, and then we reel back and say the season's moved, how disappointing is that? Or are we like, kind of, you know, rolling the snowball, and we are kind of feeling like we have to go ahead, when the risk is greater? It makes me very uncomfortable if we're not following the Health Department in the two weeks, and then if the cases go up. It's a community situation, I understand there's mitigation that can be done, there's safety to be had, and this is going to go along with, do we open school, it's similar or different, it's our whole community, we are a community, we're not a little, a school in its own little bubble, like the NBA, people are coming and going from different parts of town, our teachers, our students, our parents, and, and I think it's an important thing to look at. You know, it's up to everybody to wear a mask and social distance, so that we can have school get back to five days a week, because if we don't do those things, we're not going to control the virus, and that's the problem in the other states where there is school and sports, the virus is going bigger in our neighbors, and people are not paying attention, and so it's getting worse, and, and, you know, my husband's an emergency room doctor, he's treating people for COVID right now, probably at the hospital, and the numbers are going up, there's people being admitted, and if we overflow the hospital, the death rate will go up, because we can't treat the people if we have too much, too much increase in numbers, and so, it's very real, it's very real, I appreciate what you said, it's very important, we, we don't want to risk people's lives, we do want to live our lives, and it's, the other part is very difficult, too, people, there is stress, there is anxiety, there's unhappiness. I don't like to tell my family, there's no expectation for the holidays, I don't know what it will be, it's a far way away, I don't know what sports will be in the spring, I want it to be what I want it to be, but we can't control it, we can do our part, and do our part by wearing masks and distancing, and not going to big gatherings, but we can't control others, we can try, we can spread the good news, but it's hard, we have to encourage others, but it's, it's hard decisions, on both sides, it's so hard.
What's your thinking currently about basketball? Just curious.
So, I feel like we need to wait, and see what's happening, you know, I think there's going to be some schools who have basketball, and some who don't, and if we wait, that's okay, if we have safe camp in the meantime, and offer camps for kids that are safe, that are, that are managed, I think that's okay, and I think, you know, every sport is a little different, but it's been clear that wrestling is a contact sport, golf is not a contact sport, this one somehow seems to be in the gray area, but I think the Health Department is saying it's a contact sport.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with what was just discussed, I think, having, keeping it in-house with the mitigating things that we can do, I'm not comfortable sending our kids out to other schools, and I want to make it clear, if these young men and women choose to, you know, do basketball, that we're not making promises, I don't want to disappoint people, I mean, they're going to be disappointed, but I want to be clear upfront, and not tell them, well, we'll let you know in two weeks if we're going to let you go to a game or something, because I just think, we want to give them an outlet, sports is a great outlet, but I do think that we're just taking a chance now. Football, I know, is not basketball, but, you know, the University of Illinois football team just got contaminated by the University of Wisconsin football team, who had COVID, they went to Wisconsin, they played a game, they came back, and they all got sick, and, you know, Wisconsin had to forfeit a game because of that, and I don't know if U of I is going to play this week or not, but the point is, they're being careful, they're testing, they're doing everything they can to keep their, their students safe, and yet there's still an outbreak on the teams. Leaving your environment, it just, you're opening up the danger level, and I think we need to be cautious.
Looking to who hasn't weighed in here.
I personally would spend more of my effort on the school.
Sandra, I'll say, I could support letting basketball start, as long as there's a clear expectation that a decision would be made within those first two weeks, whether or not they would get to play or not. As long as we continue in a camp and mode of operation, and keep things socially distant for those kids.
Okay. Penny, was that where you were at, I was trying to summarize, or did you not say, Penny?
At first, I was thinking I could, you know, I could still go with the camp, but I, I feel that that's not, that's not providing a real answer to those students that want to play, and that are planning to play, and the coaches. I, I'm over-cautious about this, because I think it's a slippery slope for us to go against all of the outside entities, whether it be the insurance company, the lawyers, the Health Department, who have told us not to do this. And so, I, I wouldn't support, I wouldn't support doing it, I could support continuing the camp, but as far as having our students travel to other schools, where we can't control the environment, I think that that's, that's part of that slippery slope.
I have a question, Brian, what happens if we decide not to go ahead with the basketball season, you know, playing these other games at this time, is the season postponed, like the other sports have been, or do the kids in basketball... Is, is the season postponed like the other sports have been, or do the kids in basketball just not get to play?
No. As I said, one of the things that I, the conversations I had with the MSL was, you know, we were gonna have our conversation tonight, they're gonna have theirs next week, um, and we were gonna try our best to coordinate efforts to have some, at least a conference season. Now, by not moving forward now, just what it really means is that we would not participate in the IHSA tournament, okay? Uh, or the IHSA schedule, all right? We could, we could, we could still, you know, come February, jump in it if we felt like we wanted to do that at this time.
Numbers can improve, too, right?
If we can play games between now and then. I don't, I don't know that those are even going to exist in this area. I don't know. I just don't know if there's anybody gonna be willing to play. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. We, I just don't know. Okay? Obviously, they are, uh, with the guidelines that the IHSA has to, and I'm looking at Steve here, there's travel restrictions, correct, Steve? We can't travel far, we gotta stay regional, correct?
So, you have to stay in your conference or in your region?
You need to get the, the mic. Come on, can you take him the mic? Yeah. We're gonna give Steve the mic. What Steve was saying, you have to stay in your region. I knew there was travel restrictions, as there has been for other sports.
Okay, so, you have to stay in your conference, which is the MSL, or in your region. So, we have built the schedule around our conference. Our first game is not a tournament like it would be in the past. Um, the, the regulations are pretty clear about tournaments at this point not being allowed as well. So, we're able to play the conference. Our first game is actually December the 1st for the girls. We would travel to, um, Rolling Meadows High School for the opener, and then we have the boys opening and a crossover game on Friday at Barrington High School. That's Friday the 4th. So, um, our holiday tournaments that we traditionally participated in, they've had to reconstruct those. I don't know that they've done it for the girls tournament at this point, but the boys tournament has changed from what was really kind of a, a, a highlight tournament from around the Northwest suburbs and mainly Northern Illinois has become just a small, little regional Jacobs tournament. So, uh, those are the things, we've actually been preparing for that and setting it up so that we can move forward. I would say, um, in terms of language, just Brian, we, we're not talking about, um, having a basketball camp anymore. Um, our goal is to form a basketball team. We had a, uh, one of our dancers speak earlier this evening about tryouts and, you know, how disappointing it was when we, everything changed with the IHSA and we didn't form our dance team when we typically do. We don't wanna do that with basketball. We wanna form the team, put them together, and begin to prepare for the season. And if, if we have to wait to play the games, we've got the team. We, we, you know, as we spoke this afternoon, and I think a lot of us agree in this room, that's an outlet that a lot of, um, student athletes have worked for. We've, we've gotta maintain that for them. So, that's, that's, in a lot of the realms of Barrington High School and throughout the district, that's been our focus, and that's what we're trying to do is, you know, the rules, the IHSA rules, the Illinois Department of Health balance those, and that's what we've been focused on.
So, what Steve said he would, they would like to do is go ahead and form the teams. Now, whether we play or not remains to be seen. Again, we may not have anybody to play. We might have people to play. We just don't know. But right now, we would just keep everything in-house at this point until we know what, what actually's gonna happen in our area. That's what Steve was saying. Could you guys hear that?
How, yeah. How could you, how could we communicate then that, that that's all we're willing to do at this point is to form the team?
Well, hold on, Steve's gonna comment again. You might as well keep the mic till this conversation's over with, Steve. Sorry, we're in a big room here.
So, so I. I think we would do exactly what we did in the fall. We didn't know exactly what was gonna happen with, with golf, with cross-country. We didn't know that there was gonna be a state series, what it would look like. We just said, "You know what? These are the guidelines that have been given to us. We're going to prepare and move forward with it." We had some comments about camps this year. That was an opportunity for us. We wanted to get students on campus. That's why we started the camps. That's what IHSA allowed us to do, what the Illinois Department of Health allowed us to do. So, we'll just be clear to the student athletes. We need to, we need to be able to schedule games, and if 211, 214 are in, they're out, that, that will dictate some things. Other schools in our region, depending on which is McHenry and Lake County, will determine what we can do with some of these things. We, we have to wait to see what happens with that before we can commit, and we'll just, we'll share that with our teams. I'm not a basketball coach. I was a coach, but I bet you if we asked the parents in here, "What do you want, what would you like to do if you had the option?", I would say, many of them would raise their hand and say, "Form the team, and let's get them together." And then we'll let those other places, those other pieces play out as soon as, as we can get to them. I would say.
Other thoughts? I know Angela, Gavin, we're gonna, man, I'm sorry.
I, I think that we, this whole conversation has been largely around the sports aspect. Um, I, I'm perfectly, perfectly comfortable under both of them, but I would rather spend our resources on the other dialogue first and foremost, but, yeah, let's just take a vote on it, but let's just have a vote and move on from the basketball conversation.
Yeah.
Angela?
And I feel the exact same. I, um, I am comfortable with exactly what Steve recommended, and I do think that my priority personally is to discuss, how can we get the kids back into school? I think that that's the, the most important, um, issue. Not to downplay how important, uh, sports are, but I think that returning to the hybrid mode affects all of our district, and I'd like to kind of focus in on that.
So, we're gonna take a vote on basketball?
Well, I'm just looking for consensus here, one way or the other. You know, I, I wrote down what I thought I heard, so I wanna, I wanna just confirm that, would it be helpful? Okay? Here's what I think I heard. I heard, um, you know, Leah and, and Barry and Penny said you were concerned about it, um, and, and would, would not continue at this point. Again, that's just what I wrote down. I heard Mike and Gavin and Angela and Sandra, I'm not sure where you were, but you all seemed like you were comfortable moving forward at this time. Uh, Sandra, what, what, did you firm up your position, or I didn't get it down right?
Um, I'm okay with moving forward and, and forming the team, but then making a decision whether or not we will participate at another time.
Okay. You mean in the games, correct?
In the games, right.
Okay. So, I, if I'm reading it right, and I've got four, four board members that wanna go ahead and start the process as Steve explained, um, I don't know if we have anybody to play or not at this point, but we would go ahead and begin on November 16th. Is that correct?
So, Brian.
I, I'm actually okay with that as long as forming the team doesn't qualify as violating, um, you know, falling under, falling under what Clic will not cover. Does that make sense?
I understand. Well, I'll certainly have to, you know, I think a follow-up on this will be, obviously, we gotta see what our conference schools are doing, right? Um, I can tell them where our board is on this topic. They're gonna, trust me, they're gonna call me tomorrow and wanna know where we're at. Um, and so, I know that's gonna be a part of their discussions over the next week, uh, at their board meetings as well.
Yeah. I think even beyond that, though, to Penny's point is just to get follow-up with our insurance carrier as to whether forming teams, practicing, things like that before we are playing games, um, you know, puts us at any risk as well.
Well, they, they were clear. They, they said, "You're on your own," is what they said. So, you're assuming the risk if we even, even if we do what we're talking about doing.
Okay.
Because they've determined that basket, basketball is a high-risk sport. They were clear. I mean, they're not gonna, it's what it is.
But could, but we're still allowed to do camp, right? So, if we, if we address the, the formation of a team like we've been addressing camp.
We would keep our mitigation efforts in place during this time. Right, Steve? Am I saying that correctly? I'm looking at Steve, hold on.
Yeah, that, that's correct. So, we had football practicing in camps, basketball's been in camps.
They're both considered high-risk. They have certain mitigation processes that they would have to follow. We would have to go through those same processes until we get some clear direction on that. So, it would be more like our camps. I think one of the things that's a mitigation piece is it's, it's limited in terms of the amount of, of scrimmaging that you can do, so they try to, they try to minimize that close contact that happens. So, we would have to continue to follow those, but we can certainly get our teams up and running and working towards as, as we're trying to get some more direction on that.
Yeah, and as, just so everybody's clear, too, as we move forward, if we have any, um, uh, outbreaks, which is two or more cases in, in a activity like that, then we shut the activity down. That's happened this fall, the board's aware of that in other activities, and we would do the same thing if we had to. Or we would obviously quarantine or isolate programs if we had any, those, that's part of the mitigation efforts that we would follow if we need to and have to. Okay? And you see that playing out in professional and college right now as well. When they have, you know, an outbreak, you know, then they shut it down. They shut it down for a while, or they quarantine a significant component of maybe the whole team or, or certain players or coaches or whatever the case may be.
I hate to belabor this. I, I'm really sorry, but I'm a little confused now because I guess I need just a real straight, maybe yes or no. Does forming the team, I mean, we've been running these camps which have not been against the Health Department's rules, correct?
That is correct.
And if we continued in a camp mode, are we forming, are, are we, and form the teams in a camp mode, are we violating Health Department?
Yes. So, Penny, I'll read this. This is not attorney-client privilege. This is, um, the insurance carrier.
I hear that, yeah.
Right? So, there is, they are recommending that members refrain from all basketball contact practice and competition until such time as the IDPH and the BOE determine that this sport with proper mitigation can be played in a reasonably safe manner.
That's our liability carrier.
So, the key word there is "contact."
I, I thought that this was specific to the IHSA team, not just the camp. So, if, if even having a camp is against the Health Department in the sense, then I'm out, but you may already have four.
I think we do have four, unless somebody's changed their mind. Okay, I understand, Penny. I will certainly keep the board updated. Obviously, there's a lot that's gonna happen over the next few weeks in regard to this issue. You know, we may not even be playing at all if nobody's available or willing to play. So, uh, and if we cannot figure out a safe path forward to do it, so. Okay?
All right.
We'll rely on your recommendation when the time comes.
Part of it's gonna, you know, one thing I will guarantee you, I know the athletic directors and the principals will be doing this, as well as the superintendents, we will be working collaboratively with our conference in particular to, uh, determine our path forward. Um, we may go ahead and get the team going, as we said, but we may choose to delay the season. We might. I'm just anchoring expectations here to what could occur. Uh, we just don't know today what's going to happen. Okay?
All right. Ready to move on?
Yeah. The next topic, which I know several of you have indicated you really wanna spend more time on, which is the next level of, it's the same topic, it's level of risk, liability, um, you know, the, the legal implications of moving forward with the hybrid plan. Essentially, that's where we're at. Should we continue? It's a lot of the same issues here. Um, it's not sports, right? Um, I do believe, as you've seen in these same documents, there is, you know, a difference here because we have total control about what's going on in our environment if we choose not to continue to follow the two metrics, uh, from the public health departments. And again, this is the CDC, the Illinois Department, and the Lake County Health Department, and, you know, that developed these, okay? So, um, conversation around that. Same type of conversations, it's a little different set of circumstances, obviously.
All right.
I'm sorry for asking a question of, um, Mike and Sandra specifically because, um, you know, there's been a lot of focus placed on how, you know, the thought that the district can successfully take care of our students, but the other group of people that we also have to make sure and say is our staff, and I know the two of you attended the labor management meeting, and I'm just wondering if you got a sense of that meeting, how the staff felt and if there was, you know, how they felt about moving beyond the metrics that we've already established?
So, uh, Sandra, if I can just answer and then jump in if, you know, if there's anything I'm missing?
Sure.
Um, we did hear that we were, we had been doing things very well, uh, from one of the representatives. Um, they're also open to, uh, using weighted average data and interested in that, uh, from a geographic standpoint, so actually possibly changing the metrics, uh, to be more, uh, accurate or reflective of our, our actual, uh, population versus general, you know, county data, with regard to geography, anyway. Um, so, there's that to answer your question. Um, Sandra?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, well, I, while we were in agreement, we also agreed to a second meeting. So, we are meeting again on Monday. I believe it's Monday at 4:00 PM.
That is correct.
Continuing the conversation, um, to, to reinforce the alignment that we have. I think if we, um, change the parameters and go outside of the Health Department's recommendation, I think there will be concern.
Yeah, the, both associations were very clear that they, uh, expected us to follow the two current health metrics. They were clear on that in the conversation. You're right, Sandra. Uh, if we, if the board chooses to go a different direction here, that's certainly gonna change the conversation with, with those groups.
And, and there was a mention of, um, looking at the data differently, weighted average based on our experience versus, was it the county? Can someone help me understand a little bit more about that?
All, again, what we agreed to, and I've been working directly with a couple of BA members on this, looking at, uh, taking the ZIP code data, which I provided to the board, looking at every building, and basically keeping the same metrics, not changing the metrics, just applying a weighted average based on the students who attend each building. Um, and that's really what it's about, to have a better reflection of what, who's actually in that facility at any given time. And then they're using the ZIP codes, uh, but keeping the metrics, not changing the metrics at all, just weighting it on the actual enrollment of the students in that facility. That's what it is.
In the facility? So, do you mean that, um, we're looking at 60010, and we can look at all of the 9,000 students and the thousand staff, and we say, "Oh, the people that are in those buildings, there are 65% that are from the 60010 ZIP code." And so, then we look at the percentages in 60010 and say, "Okay, we're gonna take that times .65," and then we're gonna put that into our equation instead of looking at four ZIP codes, putting them together, and dividing it by four.
It would, kind of, that is correct. It's an algorithm. You would take a look at, like, for example, Barrington High School, 75% of the students at Barrington High School are in 60010. I shared this information with the board. 14% are in 60110, right? Um, 8% are in 60192, and 2% are in 60021, right? So, you would just weight it. You would weight the, whatever the, the current health metric is, you would weight it on the percentage of students that are in the, that school. That's, that's it.
Which I have significant concerns about because if that's what, if we're gonna stick to the Lake County Health data, um, they haven't been transparent with us. It's very difficult to look at a case count in an entire ZIP code and come up with a correlation between a elementary, middle, and high school age building. So, you know, I, I'm a proponent of trying to come up with different metrics that really represent our population and our community that are, are moving about our buildings and our community. And I, I don't know what those are today, but, you know, the reality is, when we were open, we didn't see a lot of positivity spread. Other schools that are in our neighboring areas, they have been open for a while and are not seeing. are not seeing positivity spread. And do they have labor issues? I'm sure, but they're finding ways to make it work.
I agree, and, you know, one of the weighted average possibilities to better reflect our population, right? It includes the teachers, obviously, we need them, we value them. I would really like to engage with every single one of them, to be honest, and get their individual feedback on how we could be doing things better. That said, we have about 90% student pop in our population, which is a very low-risk age category, is not the one filling up emergency rooms, intensive care beds with COVID. And then we have about 10% adults. And we've seen from some counties, not the ones that feed into our district, in Illinois, that they are breaking out data a little more specifically. And we've seen big percentages of those case numbers coming from nursing home populations, 70%, big percentages. So, you know, why would we want to use nursing home data to make a decision on our school population? Now, can we get that data from our counties? Maybe not, but maybe there are other creative ways to kind of hone in.
I have asked that question for weeks, and Lake County does not have it, and they're not going to provide it, and Cook County doesn't have it either. You are right, there are other counties that do, but Lake and Cook do not. Kane County does not have it as well. So, our three counties that we have schools in don't have it and have no plans to provide it, just so you know. I've asked, I've asked repeatedly, I asked this morning at 8 o'clock, me and many superintendents, but we're not going to get it, so.
Is it available statewide?
No.
We got an email.
That's DuPage County.
No.
No, this is DuPage.
I'd like to see it.
This is Illinois Department of Health.
Yeah, I'd like to see the link on the Illinois side, I think that might have been obtained through Freedom of Information.
That's not the location, that's the age range.
Right, right, but.
I'm talking about the location.
Didn't Lake contribute to this?
Did they what?
Did they give them any information to create this? I mean, I can't believe that Lake County has zero information about, that's a good place to write letters to.
They're not in our metrics. So, they're not in our metrics.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, and I know that you've asked, Brian, I'm not doubting this.
Early and often, and send emails, correct.
But, I think it's atrocious that we can't get this type of information in this county when you look at, all of the other counties have it except Cook.
And Lake.
And.
And McHenry doesn't either. I was told that this morning. So.
So, anyway, I think that that's, that is a good metric that I'd like to look at as You know, as far as looking at returning back to the hybrid, obviously, I want to get back to hybrid as soon as possible. You know, I look at the dashboard that we have, we have, it looks like, and we should, we should like clear on the dashboard, we should clear when the case clears, so it's a rolling number.
It does, it does clear.
Okay. So, if that's the case, then it looks like we have four positive students right now and four positive staff. And, you know, to me, that just seems like we are doing a great job, and we have sufficient PPP, PPE, or PPP, I can never remember which one it is, PPP.
That's, no.
You know.
That's at Barrington High School. That's just at the high school, just so you know.
Right, there's only, there's only been one student case.
I just want to clarify that, I understand.
Right. Anyway, our schools are doing a great job, and we all seem to be very comfortable with sports in our schools, and where kids are contacting each other and things like this. So, I feel like the pathway is very straightforward to get the kids back into the hybrid learning. And I know that the issue with labor is a real issue, and I know that you navigate this all the time, Brian, but I just personally, as far as like what liability I'm willing to take on as far as getting kids back into school, I don't think that putting kids in school is willful and wanton negligence. I think that, you know, there are countless articles that talk about, you know, even in places where community infections were on the rise, outbreaks in schools are uncommon, particularly where precautions are taken to reduce transmission. You know, more than 65,000 schools in Italy reopened in September as case numbers were climbing in the community, but only 1,200 campuses experienced outbreaks four weeks later. And, you know, there's new studies from Yale, and, you know, transmission, working in childcare is not linked to COVID-19 risk. Surprising results in initial virus testing in New York City schools. And, you know, all of these studies that come from actually putting the kids in school are coming back with really positive results. And, you know, the NPR just had an article, I think it came out of, oh, this may actually be the Yale study, but it, you know, it said, "As a pediatrician, Daniel Dooley, I'm really seeing the negative impacts of these school closures on children. Mental health problems, hunger, obesity due to inactivity, missing routine medical care, the risk of child abuse, on top of loss of education. Going to school is vital for children." And at the very end of the article, it says, the best quote ever, "It's time to shift the discussion from the risks of opening K-12 schools to the risks of keeping them closed." So, anyway, that's, you know, that's where I am as far as moving forward, and, you know, I think we could probably just go through, and I want to keep this conversation moving along, and I think the metrics issue is probably going to take up a little bit more time, so.
Maybe not.
Anyway, that's my poll, or vote, or whatever we're calling it.
Barry, I thought you were going to jump in there or not?
I was just going to say before that we have our week and a half experiment, and we did very well with it. And so, I'm heartened. I mean, I, not that I was a pessimist and I didn't think it was going to go well, but I was supportive of going back to hybrid, and it, I think it showed that we can do it with our mitigation, with our masks, with our distancing. I think the kids are doing a much better job than we even maybe thought they would do, keeping their masks on. So, I think we do want to move forward, but, you know, I do think there's still a couple stumbling blocks. You know, we're going to talk later about finances, but, you know, how to do this so that we can continue to feel safe and continue to feel like we're protecting our teachers and our, you know, our students. So, I am interested in finding out what our, you know, the board wants to do in terms of budgeting and, you know, handling the, handling is the wrong word, but working with our teachers and our ancillary staff, and how we come up with a metric that everybody feels good about, or at least good enough about that we can move on, because I don't think everybody's going to like what we choose to do. So, yeah, I'm in support of moving forward, I really am.
Sandra, Penny?
Hey, Sandra. Okay. Look, everybody wants to get the kids back in school. There's no question that that's where everybody wants to go. I liked what, one of the last couple of comments, the gentleman said, "How can we work together?" And it seems like everyone, I hear the cheering, I hear the clapping, we could all work together to push Cook County, Lake County, to give us those metrics that pertain to the schools so that we can open safely. I'd like us to try and figure out, and maybe, Angela, maybe we as a school board can write to the Health Department and make a statement that we'd like metrics that will help us, that pertain to our, you know, pertain to the schools, and how we can use the more detailed metrics to get us back in, get us back in the school safely.
Dr. Harris, you've been asking for that, haven't you?
Every week, and email every, all the time. I'm not alone either. Every superintendent's asking.
Yeah, so, but my question then would be, how long do we wait for that?
I don't think it's going to happen. I mean, I'm just telling you, I was told it's not, Cook County has nothing. I mean, they don't, and they're not going to. Lake County has told us they're not, they don't believe that's a, I'm just, I'm not agreeing, I'm just telling you what I was told, that they don't believe that's an appropriate piece of information, it's misleading, that that's what they're saying, okay? I'm not agreeing with them, I'm telling you, every time I ask, that's what I'm told, okay? I even shared the, same document you, yeah.
Yeah.
And I asked for it. It, we're not going to get it, is my point. So, Sandra, I'm sorry, you can certainly try, please do.
I'll do it.
Yeah, so.
Well, then, I, yeah, and to Mike's point, like, I don't want to wait, I just feel like we just keep waiting and waiting for something new to happen. I just, I think we need a decision, and we need to come up with, because if we keep these same metrics that we have, we will not return to hybrid. So, we.
We need to be innovative and a little creative. We have a lot of talent on our team, and got to figure it out.
I repeatedly get asked from parents, emails, from board members, well, how can these other districts, I heard it tonight, because their boards have chosen to take on the additional risk, and that's it. I mean, that's it. And if, that's why I'm asking the question. That's why some districts have, some districts have not. And, you know, and some districts change all the time. Two weeks ago, Lake Zurich's been doing this forever, but guess what? They're in the same situation we are right now, okay? I mean, I've heard it from everybody, I haven't heard about Lake Zurich lately because Lake Zurich's closed, right? But, I'm just saying, every school district right now has, and even our attorney said, you know, it's, you do have the prerogative to do that if you choose to, but you have to understand the risk, okay? Remember, two months ago, we had nothing, and that's why I worked to create something, because it wasn't available to us, remember? I also became an expert in public health metrics, which I've never done in my life. And, but we had to create something to be able to base a decision on. I mean, I do that with everything we do. And so, obviously, we're fast forward, we're two months down the road here, and we're in this dilemma, I get it. I understand the risk, and, but I can't make that decision as superintendent. Board has to say, it's okay, take the additional liability, the additional risk, and we understand what's out there without those particular metrics. They're not made up. CDC had them, IDPH has them, Lake County has them. You've seen them.
I mean, I find it interesting that liability is the word that we're using here, that our governor so conveniently put upon us, because, you know, I don't think putting kids in school is willful and wanton negligence, you know, especially with all of the precautions that we've taken, and looking at the data that we have drawn from the students when they were in school, and now when they're e-learning. People are still getting COVID even though they're not in the buildings, it's not coming from kids, it's not coming from school. So, you know, I feel like we do have data, we have our internal data.
We have our dashboard.
And we have been handcuffed by our Lake County Department of Health to provide any reasonable data from the community at large, because it does include nursing homes, it does, and it's just not fair to stay shackled and say, "They suck." I mean, I feel like we just have to be aggressive and say, "Look, our community is, or our school is looking great with regard to COVID outbreaks, and we have handled the situation well, let's get back in and get some more data and see how it continues to look."
And here's the reality, and you've actually, the districts that are open, okay? And I had conversations today, the ones to our east, they have individually shut schools down in their district, a couple of them, they have three or four schools shut down because they've had spread in their buildings. So, if we do this, just so you know, if we have two outbreaks, or two scenarios, then we'll shut that building down. That will be required by the Public Health Department.
Which is very.
We won't have a choice on that.
Very responsible.
I just want, you know, that happens. And that's happened in those districts that are open. If they have individual schools where they've got those situations, look in their, that's what's going on right now, the two districts to our east, right? They've each got about three or four schools that are closed while their district is open, okay, in the hybrid mode. But, they do have their several buildings that are closed because they've had outbreaks in their buildings with spread. So, it doesn't mean we're staying open no matter what. If we have, through contact tracing, if there's a problem, you know, we could still get individual buildings closed for 14 days at a time.
And Brian, I would never personally suggest that you do anything opposite of that, I think that is when it becomes negligent. But, as far as getting to a point where we can open the doors and get kids back in, that is not negligent.
I don't disagree.
I know you don't, I know you don't disagree.
I have a lot of confidence in our protocols that we've been using, and that we'll continue to use. It seemed to work.
I have a question. Right now, the metrics that we have, it says we would be closed, and we are closed. So, if we, are we, as a board, it sounds to me, and maybe I'm not hearing clearly, that we want to open next week no matter what the metrics are. And I don't think I'm hearing that, but I'm not clear on where we're at, because I'm not comfortable with that. If we're going to create new metrics, I think we need to create them, look at them, we can't just, you know, open. I think that COVID is on the rise right now, we've got holidays coming up, it's not happening in our schools, but anecdotally, people who came tonight said kids are getting together, people are getting together. There is COVID in our community, and I would disagree respectfully that it's not only in nursing homes, it's people of all ages who are bringing it to different people. And kids might not have symptoms, but they may be asymptomatic, and they could bring it home to their family. So, I think we need to be more cautious than all of us saying, yes, let's open school right now. I think we need to do it step by step. If we're going to look at the metrics, we need to meet with our teachers and our Teacher's Association, and we have to, you know, talk about it and then bring it back to the board. I don't think we can, you know, say tonight, yes, let's just open, you know? I'm very uncomfortable with that, and I think other people would be as well. I think there's many people who are feeling just as strongly that we're doing okay with distance learning, who are at home because they're uncomfortable to be at a meeting like this, who might just as vehemently say, "Distance learning is what we should be doing, and if some people are comfortable going back, that's okay, but are we going to have enough teachers who want to be in the buildings if the numbers continue to rise in our community?" So, I think we have to take it step by step.
I am concerned about the teachers and the other stakeholders. I know that we have a lot of support from the parents, and it's not that the teachers are in the district, but they're a vital part of the community and a vital part of the cog that makes this school district what it is. So, you know, I definitely want to make sure that they are, you know, a vital part of the discussion as we do move forward.
I think we should hear from every single one of them, and we have heard from some on both sides. Some want to be back, some have children, they want to be back. And remember, people can still choose remote, whatever we do.
But, the teachers don't have that much choice.
Teachers don't have that choice.
I understand, but listening to Leah, I mean, the higher risk people, if you have higher risk family members, or you're afraid of the virus, go remote. I mean, they are, and they should.
Just for the record, our associations told us at that meeting, they expect us to continue to follow these metrics. I, and we need, I think it would be important to have a follow-up conversation, but I'm just saying, they didn't waiver on that. They did not, I've shared the information with the board, you've seen. Okay, I'm just telling you what we heard at that meeting, okay? They were clear what their expectation was.
What are expectations?
I understand. I'm just telling you, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that, you know, what their position, there was no wavering on their position, at least when we had that conversation, Definitely, we need to have a follow-up conversation, no matter what, if we go a different direction.
Okay. So, Gav, did you?
Penny? Sandra?
Maybe last one?
Penny?
Penny, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I am, I'm sorry, I was trying to get off mute there.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think, I was trying to listen best I could, and I could, I, I agree with Barry, um, you know, as I said earlier, if I'm taking risks, I would rather take risks in the area of trying to get everybody back to school, however, I heard a number of things tonight, I heard some, I heard that the teachers don't want to move out of what, out of the current metric, so we clearly have work to do there. I, 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 well, I'm happy to engage in a conversation to adjust the metrics, I think someone suggested that, um, I, I have nowhere, I have no idea where to start with that conversation, if someone else has ideas that they'd like to throw out, I'm certainly interested in listening to that, because right now, if I, if I remember right, I tried to compare this today, our metrics match the CDC, and do they also match the Lake County Department?
Yes.
So-
And the Illinois, and IDPH as well.
Okay, so if we're gonna go beyond that, I'm willing to have a conversation, um, but I'd like someone else who is perhaps, um, more aggressive on this topic to maybe start that conversation.
I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're-
I mean, if, if that's the case, I mean, we might as well, I mean, at that point, we're saying we're not opening schools, at least this calendar year, um, and I think the, the idea is, at least in my opinion, use the, the data that we've collected internally to try to manage risk best as possible, and I think we've done a really good job of doing that.
Okay, I thought I, I thought I had heard agreement about adjusting metrics, if I didn't, perhaps it's because I'm having a hard time hearing.
No, I don't, we do, there was some conversation around it, I don't believe there's been, you know, we really didn't get into them, you know, essentially, if the board's willing to take additional risk and liability and move back into the hybrid mode, we'd essentially be, uh, moving away from metric number one and number two, because those are what they are, and, uh, we would be moving away from those, and either looking at something else, like the local data, as Gavin pointed out, looking at, um, you know, where the spread has been, there are other, DuPage County has it, right? Um, it's not our county, but quite frankly, I don't personally think it'd be that different, it'd probably be similar, just my guess, I don't know, um, but, you know, I, I don't know what else there is, those are the two, those are the two things that I have been told at every level, are the two main health metrics that public health officials make their decisions on, that's it, and it's really whether the board wants to stay that course, or do we want to avoid those two at this time, and, and make our own decisions based on the information, other information that we have available to us. That's really the issue here, and that's the direction I'm looking for, you know, and how to spend staff time moving forward, thinking about, you know, where we're headed, and there's another piece of this question, we'll have a short-term solution, and obviously then, kinda gets into these next questions, more of a long-term, you know, I mean, short-term, we would probably continue in, in what we have done, I know it's far from ideal, and we've already had conversations about looking into some different, so, you know, scenarios, can't do that by next Monday, or even the following Monday, probably be a few weeks down the road if we were to adjust, like at the elementary level, for example, okay? Um, but, again, the short-term, long-term, that's where some of these other questions come into play, right, about looking at long-term solutions, uh, not only here-
I'm in favor of, of not looking at metric one and two, to reopen our schools, on a hybrid basis.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mike, Barry?
Can you, could you restate that, I couldn't hear it.
Gavin said he's in favor of, of moving away from metric one and two, Angela agreed, and Mike agreed, so I was now down to Barry.
I think we need some metrics that involves, and again, I'm not a statistician, uh, that involves illness in the area, and not just teacher availability and, and, uh, equipment availability, which are your, you know, like your third and fourth metric, so there has to be some metric that takes into account what's happening in, in, in our community, so, you know, again, I, I don't know that you have the time or the bandwidth, but I think we need to find a new metric that the community can support, but that our teachers can support, that takes into account what's happening in the area.
But Brian said there isn't, like, he keeps asking, and they just won't help us, I mean-
I can't, we just, I don't think we can just say, "Let's just throw it out and forget about it," because-
Well, Brian's conversation with the Lake Department, Lake County Health Department said the data is misleading, which leads to believe it's gonna support our thesis to get the kids back to school, or else they would've given it to Brian the 17 times he's asked for it, I mean, that, you have to make that assumption.
If you looked at DuPage data by age group or source of breakout, and like to Brian's point, we're not that far away geographically, you have some indicators you could apply to the data we do have, you know, in a mathematical way.
For example, I mean, that's reasonable, I just, I just want-
Or statewide, which is also-
You know, one of the suggestions I had for the, just for board's consideration, you know, was to, you know, move away from one and two, uh, follow the directives from ISBE and the IDPH regard to, you know, uh, implementing our hybrid, um, and do the contact tracing, follow all those expectations, which you know we're doing, um, and then look at what's happening in our buildings, that's what other districts are doing that are open, I'm, that's it, that's what they're doing, and I talked to four superintents today individually on the phone, I said, "Okay, you're, you're just looking at your local data, basically what we have on our dashboard, and making the decisions what to do in each building every day," that's what they're doing, there is no other piece of information they're using, I, I mean, I don't wanna name districts, I just prefer to stay away from that, I, I know which ones are open, and I know what they're doing, so that's the issue, that there is no other piece of information, it's either we follow the health metrics by setup by the public health officials, or we don't, we use local information based on our experience.
So I have two questions here, you've mentioned a few schools that are open, but how many schools are not open, there are many that are not open.
Because they're following the health metrics that we're currently using.
That we're talking about, and it's not one or two, it's, it's many, many, many in the Chicagoland area, in the north suburbs, in the west suburbs, our neighbors, right? There's a few neighbors open, but if we are in distance learning, we are not the, the minor, we're, we're not, you know, out there all alone being in distance learning, many, many schools are, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and many schools are following the Health Department metrics.
They are, there's very few districts, very, very few, that are open in Lake County, and the ones that are, have done exactly what I said, they're basically ignoring the public health data, and they're just taking on their own risk and using their own information they have in their school, that's what they're doing.
So just to be clear-
So that's their, that was their board's decision to take on that risk, that is correct.
Right, secondly, I agree with Barry, there's gotta be some measurement, we can't just say we're throwing that out, and we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna wing it, I don't think that's appropriate at this time, you know, we, we have to have a metric, and, and what we've been given seems very strict, but we need to, to adjust it, but not like in a day, we need to look at it carefully and, and find out what, what makes sense, and go with what the metrics are currently until that time, and I think we're heading into the winter, the cold and flu season, the numbers, you know, I don't know the future, but I, I don't see it getting incredibly better really quickly here, so we have to be cautious, and we just won't go back.
Then there's the mental health and the learning loss, uh, how are we gonna build that into our equation, and when, because-
We need to work on that, that's really important. It's just as important.
And that would-
But it's, it's a pandemic.
If we use the local, if, if that's something, you know, that the board is interested in, then we would follow the, if the public health, you know, they'll, they'll take a look at our contact tracing, when we have positives, we will have positives, it, it, we're not gonna avoid it, we, you've seen what's happening, right, it's gonna happen, and when we have two, when we have two outbreak scenarios, that's when they would say, we would, we already did that with one of our programs, you, you know the class, we've shut down classrooms already, we've had, this week, we've had two special ed programs shut down, we've had the Little Broncos program at the high school shut down, and now it's gonna get, we had another situation, unfortunately, it's gonna continue to be closed, okay? I'm just saying, that's happened already, and, and I, it will continue to happen, uh, if we move forward in that fashion, I just want, and I know that in other districts, that's what's happening too, that are open, they may close down a classroom, they may close down an entire building, it really varies depending on the circumstances when you do the contact tracing, but their boards have decided to take that risk and not, you know, just pay attention to the, the local public health data, okay? It's what it is.
The majority of their students remain at school without COVID, I mean, they shut down here until that subsides, then they come back, so I-
The other scenario is, if we can't staff, you know, that's why we have the staffing ma, I mean, if we don't have enough teachers or enough subs in the building, we can't open, we can't run it, and so that's a very real reality, we are getting stretched right now, and if, you know that, in some of our situations, um, and some of our positives going on with staff, uh, we're getting stretched in some scenarios, okay? Um, and so it, that's what's creating the challenges in those situations that I explained.
Have we been doing pretty well with subs? I think you mentioned that they were, like, better than you anticipated at the beginning of the year.
In the last couple of weeks, it's, people are not wanting to work, so-
Oh, it's gone, the availability has gone down?
As soon as these rates start escalating, the availability of subs, uh, I was just talking with Teresa today, Teresa's not here, she is homesick, um, and, um, so she told me today that they have, she's having major concerns about subs right now, I mean, it's just in the last two weeks, right? They're choosing not to work, so, I mean, subs are at-will employees, right, they, they pick and choose when they wanna show up.
You may have to offer to pay them more.
And that could, that could go up and flow like this, so that staff metric is a huge issue, I mean, that one has, we can't open the schools if we don't have enough people in the building to supervise, and the kids that are there.
Is there any other, I know at the primary level, we've had pretty consistent attendance rates, but when we get up into the secondary level, I've heard class sizes as small as one, maybe up to 12 to 13 to 14, I mean, there, there are things that we could look within our staffing model internally to maybe shift resources to offset some issues.
Principals have been doing an amazing job of that, I'm looking at Steve, he's here, right, every day when we were open, you were shuffling things around, uh, because we had situations just exactly like that, and that's happening in the middle schools as well.
Penny, Sandra, do you guys wanna weigh in?
Sure, this is Sandra, I, I think I liked what Penny said earlier, I, I, I'm not, I cannot support just abandoning the metrics altogether, but I could support if we, um, came up with a modification to the metrics, if we took some time to extrapolate the data, um, either based on DuPage or, or, um, based upon the age, at least consider it and, and talk to the, um, the BEA and BFCO about it, but I can't support just abandoning them altogether, those two metrics.
Okay, thank you, Sandra.
So, what if we proposed using the DuPage data because it actually does break out by age groups?
Doesn't DuPage actually have location as well as age?
Yes.
No?
Yes, they do.
Source.
Could you explain it a little bit better, I'm not that familiar with it, please?
DuPage County.
No, but what, what they're using, like, what are you specifically talking about?
The source of the positive case, that's, they're, they're showing that data on their website.
The address, or like-
No, no, the type of facility, the location of the facility.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, I would, I didn't know what you meant.
Restaurants, you know.
And, and I think they also include the age of the people who have positive COVID.
Cook County does not have it, Kane County does not have it, Lake County does not have it, the three counties we have our schools in do not have that data, okay?
Let's trust, they are not willing to share that data with us.
Right, they have it.
I don't, I don't have it, okay?
I think regardless of where we end up on this, but we should, as a board, send a letter to the Lake County officials, asking them to improve and provide this data, I know Brian, that you've asked, but perhaps we can lobby some of the county officials, and, you know, I'm happy to draft a letter and send it off.
But, so, we have a labor meeting on Monday, though, I mean, should, can we, do we have any appetite to come up with some recommendations of other metrics to present? Because I'm sure just, you know, like, we have to have a proposal, I think Penny, you kinda mentioned that, like, hey, why doesn't someone throw something out?
The only thing, I've said it repeatedly, is our local information, right? I mean, that's it, I mean, that's, again, that's what other districts are doing, working with their, you know, staff on this topic.
Well, but you've heard-
I'm just, I know that.
So, but you, you've heard Penny, Sandra, Leah aren't comfortable with that, Barry, I think is, wants something different, I mean, which we would all like, so, like, what do we, how do we, how do we move forward then? You know, I mean, if we, you know, I mean, I, I respectfully, I mean, I, I feel like we, we have taken a lot of time to look through data and to, you know, I mean, I think that we need to start having new proposals, or, or something to talk to, you know, the, you know, that Mike and Sandra can use at this labor discussion, because if we go back with the exact same metrics that we have, again, we are not getting back in school anytime soon.
So how about if we take back a discussion, use the DuPage County metrics based on location, to me, that seems more relevant than by age.
We could share it with them.
And, and start a discussion there.
I think that's, that's a good idea, and perhaps there may be some comfort around understanding that a little bit more, and how it might translate to what's going on here, because I, I think it's important that we're out, that we're on the same page with this, and I think that's what I heard both Mike and Sandra say as well, forgive me if I'm putting words in your mouth.
At the end of the day, they may very well say to what Brian already said, and we're not comfortable with changing it at all, we want the most conservative interpretation available, and then we have to have that tough conversation, and I know they're watching the meeting tonight, but we've gotta find something that works for everybody.
We're not gonna find something that works for everybody, though, I mean, like-
Well, if we have a choice and options, and then we have to figure out how to improve it so that it is excellent, I mean, that's, I'm waiting till we get to that part of the conversation, and Brian mentioned improving the elementary program later, we can't do it starting Monday, or even the week after, but as we go forward, if we're open, if we're operating, hopefully we can improve as we go.
All that's irrelevant unless we have agreement between the, the two contract parties, right?
If we're operating, that's right.
If we operate.
And unfortunately, the reality right now is the numbers are increasing tremendously, so, so we're, we're coming at this discussion from a, a point of weakness, it's not like we can go to the teachers and say, "Look, the numbers are really getting better, let's be optimistic, let's stretch things a little bit," I just think we have to be cla, you know, be, be realistic here, um, you know, the numbers every day are getting that much worse.
I know, but then you see studies where, in, even where infections are on the rise, outbreaks in school aren't increasing.
I understand that, but we have to present this to the teachers, and we're, we're not coming at that discussion from a point of strength when Good Shepherd Hospital's overflowing with COVID cases right now, and they weren't, you know- with COVID cases right now. And they weren't, you know, I, and yeah, I mean, that's water under the bridge. I know people said we should have been in, you know, in the schools, you know, months ago. But there weren't COVID cases in September, October, or maybe the end of October. Now they're, you know, expanding very quickly. So it just makes it harder to have that discussion. That's all I'm saying. I, but I do feel strongly, we need some metric to present to the teachers and/or to get some, some comfort level with, if that's a word. I don't know if the, if we're gonna get a comfort level from our teachers.
Well, we can, we can try to survey them again. I mean, we did it once before, maybe we could do it better next time, too.
That's actually it, yeah.
Who was that that was gonna jump in there?
Yeah, I need to hear what Mike just said. It would be really helpful. Mike, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Sorry, I'm gonna take off my mask and talk.
I said we could survey the teachers again, and maybe do it, it too, better the next time than we did last time.
Thanks. I guess I just want to throw this in there, too. You know, when Brian first came to us with the dashboard with the metrics, you know, we were, I think, we were happy that we had something at least that was somewhat concrete for us to say, to point to, to say, this is how we're gonna manage, this is how we're gonna manage things. And then Brian expanded it even, made it a little bit, you know, gave us a little bit more leeway. And we were all happy with that. At least I don't recall hearing concerns around the board table. And now we're butting up, you know, we've, we've now become trapped by those metrics. And now we're talking about working around them in another way.
Penny, um-
We just have to be careful. I, I really do want kids back in school. And I want it done safely. And I want the teachers to be safe. I want the kids to be safe. Um, you know, I, I don't know if everyone there has received the same letters, you know, from teachers who have taken a leave because they have someone in their household that is at such high risk that they have decided to take a leave of absence from their job for fear of catching this from that school environment. Um, I, I know students that are in school, and they have that option to have that education, be at home. But I know students who live in households where there are people at risk. Um, I know people who have had COVID. And so I guess I just approach this cautiously because of that.
We should approach it cautiously.
I just think we need to be very careful about continuing to push our boundaries away, 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 to fit what we want the outcome to be.
Well, Penny, I heard everything you said, and I just wanted to add, in the August board meeting, I raised the question of the metrics and the health data as being very general. And is there a way that we could make it more accurately, accurately reflect our school population? That's a, that's a best practice in public health, if possible. And we haven't been able to get the data from the counties, but now we're getting a little bit creative in how we might be able to look at it a little differently, which I think is innovative and necessary. And we're, we can use that to make risk decisions, in my opinion, better informed risk decisions.
Well, and I also think looking at our neighbors that are comparative districts. I mean, what better way to, you know, look at how other people are doing this? You know, we, we all are in the same community, and, you know, we should be looking at our neighbors, which could be another metric.
Well, we are. I mean, I've told you what they're doing. I know what they're doing. And the ones who are closed are following the, the public health guidance. The ones who are open are not. That's it. I mean, that's it. I don't know how else to say it, you know? That's, that's the initial question, you know, and that's the hard part. And I said, you know, that's, I can only do so much, you know, and I, and the board has to direct me to take that additional step if we're gonna, you know, otherwise we stay the course and stay with the, you know, public health metrics. Because that's what the other districts, you know, you go around to her boundaries, and that's what's going on. That's what's happening. You know, another one of the districts on our, on our boundary tried to do this, but then they had outbreaks in their buildings, and they shut it down till after Thanksgiving. I mean, you know what I'm talking about. You've seen that information. That's what happened. So, anyway, I mean, that's a risk.
Everyone understands we might have to change direction as we go.
Absolutely, absolutely. If we have outbreaks in our buildings or classrooms or whatever the situations would be.
And right now, how it stands with the Health Department, as early as we could go back is the 16th, is that correct?
Uh, no, that's not with the Health Department. That's what, no, that's just, you know, following the expectations that I set out to notify our parents and staff about what we would be doing. So, you know, I said we would postpone, you know, the decision till tonight based on this conversation, whether we would open up on the 9th or consider the earliest date being the 16th. That was just me, based on our own metrics.
Okay.
No, the Health Department's not weighing it. They tell us to make our own decisions based on our information. That was gonna be my final question when this conversation gets to the end. Sandra, you teed it up. You know, what's the short-term, you know, solution here? And then obviously, the long-term's question number three, right? That's a whole different level of conversation. It's about, you know, okay, I'm talking after the holidays, you know, what can we do differently? And that's more educational oriented programming, looking at some significant changes in what we're doing, possibly reshuffling staff, things like that. That's a whole different level. And calendar, which is a board function to have to approve changes to the calendar if we were to, for example, you know, extend the winter break, have a quarantine period of a couple of weeks, don't go back, for example, till mid-January, and then maybe eliminate spring break or add the time on at the end of the year. I don't know what it looks like. I don't, we haven't proposed anything. I, I do wonder if the board's interested in that, you know, if that's something you want us to pursue. That's what that question's about. A lot of universities are doing it. A lot of school districts are starting to have the conversations about looking into the second semester and the rest of the school year.
But if we stick to metric one and two, question three is irrelevant.
That's why question one is the key question.
Like, it's already 10:30. I mean, we gotta figure out which direction we want to go and then kind of move forward.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need to vote or something.
No direction means I'm staying the course. Just, you know, I'm just saying, unless the board chooses, you know, I just wrote down what I thought I heard. And maybe I'll, can I summarize what I wrote down here? Would that be helpful at this point? Okay. What I thought I heard, and please correct me if, if I'm wrong, because I was trying to jot down your comments, that Angela and Gavin and Mike are clearly wanting to go ahead and, and move forward and open back up in the hybrid, right? That's what I believe I heard.
You're addressing question one.
That's number one, okay? Barry, you were, you said the same thing with the couple qualifiers, wanting to work with the staff, is what I heard, correct? And at least have a conversation with them before we would do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Leah, I heard you say you're not comfortable with that path. You want to stay with, continue to consider those health metrics, correct? Okay. Penny, can you clarify? What I had for you is the same thing, that you are concerned with dropping those health metrics. Is that correct?
I could, I could get to where Barry is.
Okay. And Sandra, you, the same thing. You were where Leah or Penny or Barry are, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's what I heard.
Yeah, I mean, Lee is somewhere else. So it's Barry, Penny, and Sandra now, right?
They're interested in considering it, but they want to have the next conversation with the staff before, with our two collective bargaining units before moving forward. That's where I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I'm trying to interpret here. Is that correct, Sandra and Penny?
Yes.
Barry?
Yeah, I understand. It's pie in the sky. I can't have it all. But I think one metric has to be how the students are suffering. And, you know, we're, we're talking about the, you know, the, how much COVID is around, but how much mental health and, so, so yes, I, I, I need the teachers on board. And that's why I'm, I feel like maybe I'm the wishy-washy guy, because I want it all. But, but I, I've heard what the community has said, and they're suffering, and so we need to somehow come to their aid. And I'm hoping we can get the teachers on board and we can come up with something that, that we can all live with. It's gonna take a compromise on everyone's part. So, yes.
I'm not saying I wouldn't be unwilling to hear a different metric. I'm, I'm just very skeptical at this point of another metric.
You guys speak up.
Okay, I'm saying, I'm not saying that I wouldn't look at another metric. I'm just saying I'm uncomfortable throwing everything away today. If we come up with, you know, metrics that are in line with this, and I agree with Barry, there is a mental health crisis. We need to, we need to address that. I don't think that's what is number one right now in that category, but that's got to be addressed. But yeah, I'm willing to see what other metrics might make sense.
That's question two, right?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that the board is interested in, in moving a different direction, trying to figure out a path forward to get the schools open. Some of you have different opinions on how to get there. I hear that, right? You know, we do have the Labor Management Meeting set up with the Association on Monday, okay? That'll be the next time we have that conversation. Certainly I'll be talking, trust me, I know I'll be talking with them tomorrow, after this conversation here tonight. But we won't, you know, at least having an initial conversation. But the meeting, the Labor Management Meeting needs to be the function to continue that conversation with the staff. So am I hearing, you know, so I've only, I've got four board members that believe that's the step we need to take, an intermediate step with the staff, and have that Labor Management with the staff before we would open back up in the hybrid. Is that correct? That's what I'm hearing, based on what I heard here.
I think so.
Okay, all right.
But what if this meeting does not go well?
Okay. Then we will be back here at the table having a conversation. You know, our next meeting's on the 17th, or we could have a special meeting, whatever the board chooses to do.
Well, I just, I feel like time is of the essence. And I, you know, these like long delays are just, they're killing everybody, you know?
I'm in favor of an additional meeting.
Oh, that's not, I mean, now, now I will personally be killed. So, but, no, I, I mean, can we just get a very thorough report after the, the meeting with labor on Monday? And then, you know, maybe it's just a closed session, Zoom.
Labor contract.
Right? I mean, it's a contract issue. I just, I think that we owe it to people to keep, you know, whatever the direction's gonna be, you know, these long silences are just so hard for everyone. You know, we're, we're isolated already, and then to, to not get responses from, you know, us, or, you know, same thing that we're feeling with the Lake County Department of Health. Like, to not get a response is just, you know, it's maddening.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
All right. Well, let's keep moving along so that we can go home before midnight.
May I ask one more question? When we talk at the Labor Management Meeting, maybe also talk about levels, elementary versus middle school versus high school? If there's a, if there's a way to get one level open?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Sandra.
Okay. All the heads are nodding around you, Angel?
They're all flipping me off.
We can, we can-
No, I'm kidding. No one's doing anything bad.
We can bring it up. I, I have had that, you know, we'll see, well, yeah, fine, we can have the conversation.
So I don't want to jump questions here, but if we're talking about different levels, the elementary hybrid is complicated and not as popular as the other hybrids. I don't know if there's a way to make it better.
I'm sure there is, we just gotta figure it out.
It costs $2 million bucks, but if we're not, if we don't have labor on board, we shouldn't really even have that dialogue now, would be my guess. But it's a $2 million dollar.
It's a, it's a step one, step two, step three process here. So, I, you know, we've all heard that from the community.
As a parent of elementary, I would agree with you.
That elementary is not ideal in the hybrid. Or, I mean, everyone wants hybrid, but that one needs tweaking, if it can be.
It would be a short-term solution and then a longer-term solution. But we would need time to, you know, to be able to do a complete change of what we're doing at that level would probably be after the first of the year, where we might have to look at whether we, you know, that goes down into question number four.
Exactly.
You get into budget situations, you go into stat and additional dollars, you're looking at possibly reshuffling assignments with kids and teachers if we, we have to continue to serve the, you know, parents that choose to opt out and stay in a virtual format, okay? So, that, that will take more time to adjust to, which goes into the calendar, which goes into more time, so.
So let's, Penny, do you mind if we skip to number four then, since people keep kind of going back to that?
I'm sorry, could you ask one more time?
Sorry. People are kind of going towards number four, which is budget issues. Are you okay if we skip to that? Or do you want to go with number three next?
I'll defer to Brian.
Sure. I mean, you know, I mean, these questions are gonna have, they're gonna come back up, you know?
Right.
I guess, you know, we've talked number two, one and two, I think, pretty thoroughly through here. We have. We were in and out of both of those here tonight. Number three, you know, I'm curious what the board's interest in the long, if we can figure out, you know, a path forward here, is the board, does the board have interest in taking a look at the calendar and making, you know, looking, you know, to see if we can mitigate some efforts there to looking at quarantine times after the holidays and possibly looking at some different calendar adjustments? I'm asking. If the board, if that's a nonstarter, because it's gonna complicate families' lives and everything, then I don't want to go there. But I'm asking, you know, if the board's interested in, in receiving more information in that regard.
Do you mean just e-learning between like Thanksgiving and Christmas, or do you mean-
No, I'm talking probably after the first of the year.
If they're back in the-
Do what?
If they're back in the building, on a hybrid basis or some other basis.
I, there is significant concern. Anytime we have a long, when we have the winter break, people are traveling, they're gonna be in groups, they're gonna, I mean, I'm just anticipating spread. This is what goes on at the college campuses. A lot of them are not going back after Thanksgiving, and they're done. And they aren't starting up again until, I'm just giving examples of what's going on.
And the campus schools have all announced in the first two weeks, they're gonna be remote after winter break, just so people can quarantine before they go back in person again.
What I'm saying is would we delay the start after the winter break? Is this something the board's even, I don't want to spend all the time thinking through it-
Yes.
If the board's not interested. Now Penny, are you saying yes?
No. What I, in a, in essence of time, can I make a suggestion here? We all have the document in front of us. So Brian gave a brief description of what it might, what the first bullet there might entail. Is the board interested in Brian and his staff going back and doing some more research on this and perhaps coming to us with a recommendation?
Leah said yes.
Yes.
Is there anyone else who says yes?
Barry said yes.
So I, I'm not really, I don't think that we should delay the start, but I think that if, if by some chance we're back in hybrid, I'm, if you want to look at, you know, starting with remote for two months or, or two weeks, like, like Barry said, you know, I mean, that's, I wouldn't want to delay or like change the calendar around, though.
Okay. I, my assumption was that this is, when you're saying you don't want to delay it, you mean you would like to still go back on the date that our current calendar has us returning to school in January?
Right. But if the recommendation is that we should start remote for that, you know, first- know, first two weeks back, I would discuss that. I mean, I, I think that's, but I, I don't think we should change the calendar.
Yeah.
It's common sense.
What's that, Mike?
It's common sense. It's, it's three days, right? If you're in hybrid, it's, it's really four days of in-person we're talking about doing remotely instead, correct? Per kid, per student?
We have to look at it. Here's the other thing, we would have to have the calendar committee meet. You know, this is again with labor. You know, we're, we're required to have a meeting, a calendar committee would have to get together, board's on that, there's board members, you know, represent, who's on that? Somebody's on that. That's labor man, well, it's labor management. It's Mike or Sandra. So we would have to revisit that and look at that as well. We probably, if the board's interested in this, we need to bring it up in our conversation with, at the labor management meeting on Monday night.
Do you think they'd be receptive to that idea?
I have no idea. I don't know. I don't know.
I think to Angela's point, though, you kind of killed two birds with one stone. By, if you do come back on our calendar, but you are in a remote environment, what's the difference?
Yeah. Well, it also might impact like spring break. A lot of universities are, are not having a spring break and ending early or starting later, and then you don't have people traveling back and forth as much, is what the point is with universities, which are different than K-12.
Right. There's, I, I think that this is more involved than we might have scratched the surface of here right now, because that spring break component has, is part of most colleges planned, and they just go, go right through spring break and then end early. So do we want to hear more information about this?
That's all I'm asking.
What it might, what it might look like for us?
If the board's not interested in entertaining this, then I, you know, we got, staff bandwidth is thin, and I need to focus the staff effort, including mine, on what the priority of the board is. That's what I'm asking here.
The other thing, time is of the essence for this too, because if we're gonna be impacting people's lives after winter break, that's gonna be here before we know it.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I am not in favor of changing the calendar any more than just either deciding to go remote for a certain period of time.
That's a different conversation.
Right, and I think that would be an easy conversation.
It is.
I think that, you know, changing the calendar right now is really going to create issues for a lot of our families, and I think if we're already having labor issues, throwing a calendar change into that negotiation is really gonna upset the apple cart.
Okay. How do others feel about, about Angela's statement? Not to throw you under the box, Angela, but you, you made a statement. I want to see if you can get some agreement.
I agree with Angela.
I, I agree with Angela.
Wow, lower priority, so, yeah. I'd rather you use your bandwidth on some of the more, the things that are gonna get the kids back in the school sooner and not, not fight the teachers on this one.
You know, that's one of the things that, we started on time this year, you know, and that was intentional, to try and minimize the disruption, right? And we did. I'm talking back in August. And so I just, so what I'm hearing, there's a majority of the board saying, don't even entertain the conversation. If we have to start doing remote for a couple weeks, that's something we can talk about a later day. Okay? Alright. Does that make sense to everybody?
It's fine.
Um, okay. The final.
Does everybody, does everybody understand what the second bullet is asking of us?
Under number three, Penny?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
This would be looking at a completely, you know, assuming that we move forward in a hybrid model that, you know, well, second semester might look different, is what I'm asking here. Is this something the board's interested in having me spend staff time on moving forward?
Yes. Angela's a yes.
If you think it would help, then I'm a yes.
My question is, is this mostly about elementary and is there a different way to do elementary hybrid without doing that?
Maintain instructional integrity at the elementary level. I can tell you, doing concurrent instruction with first graders is not good. It's hard enough with, you got the whole group on Zoom, let alone if you got half the kids in front of you and half the kids on Zoom. That's what we do at the secondary level. And I believe our, is it perfect? No. But, you know, the secondary kids able to manage it to some degree, yes they are. Little kid, the younger the kids, the harder it is.
Would this be something you'd be looking at for the entire district or focusing more on elementary?
I'm not sure at this point. Definitely at the elementary, I'm not sure at secondary. At this point. Someone might want to follow up with middle school and high school staff.
So do we want to learn more about what this might look like in our district?
This would not be at the next meeting. This will be a couple meetings down the road here.
Do we have any indication how families would feel about that?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any indication how families would feel about that, about switching teachers versus the benefit of it?
If we switch teachers, that will, that will, you're gonna solve one problem and create another.
So.
There's no doubt.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. It'll solve the issue of, you know, we'll go, and we would make people commit, for example, to go the whole semester on full remote. And then we would just have that teacher and those kids be in a full distance learning mode for the rest of the year. Okay?
Unless, well, regardless of COVID breaking or not, I mean, if it goes away completely.
We would ask for the commitment, because we'd have the same issue with staff, as you well know.
Okay.
Okay?
So Brian, one of the things that, is one of the questions that this type of structure makes me think about is that, what about the student that commits to the in-person instruction? And if that student gets sick or has to isolate for some reason, who teaches that student then?
Well, we would just continue like we always have. I mean, when they're, if they get a long-term illness. I mean, that's what it would be.
So they would, they would, they would not be bumped over to the, the classroom that is committed to remote? They would stay with the teacher that they would be assigned to for the in-person instruction?
My initial response would be no. However, we have not vetted this out. That's the work that we would have to, at each level, look at. No, we would ask people to commit to one path or the other.
So I mean, I just know that there are another districts that's doing this, and then they've had trouble when they run into that scenario.
That is, you are correct, Penny. You're right.
So, okay, in order to move on, do we want more information on this? Maybe just a show of hand? Someone's gonna have county on this.
Yes.
Barry's a yes.
Wait, is this on, I, I went to the.
Second semester.
Yes.
Two. Mike's three. Penny or Sandra?
I'm, I'm willing to look at it, yes. So there's four.
So that's four. So we, we will start that, or we will, you know, it's gonna take a couple week, few weeks, okay? That's what I'm saying. That's why I need the direction now. This isn't gonna happen next week, alright? Just for clarification, alright?
Okay.
This would be a second semester issue, alright? And then finally, budget. Everything we've talked about tonight, well, the direction I need, the board sets the budget, I need to know, am I working within the budget constraints, or do I have the latitude and flexibility to consider the outside of the current budget?
I'm easy on that one. We have latitude.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think this is.
Mike said yes. I would give, prefer to give you latitude, right?
I mean, we can call this a rainy day fund, whatever, but this has been a major upheaval, and this is why we've saved our money, so I think this would be a good time to spend that wisely, but definitely if we need to, you know, dip into our, our reserves, I think this is something we could do that for, yes.
If not a global pandemic, then what are you gonna, what are you gonna do it for, right?
Others?
I would agree, there has to be certain expectations from an overall. Spending of, of funds that would make the board comfortable or uncomfortable. You can't just have a blank check. But the reality is, there's.
I would not do that. You would be very aware of what's going on.
I have to say it, because it is true. I, I mean, at the end of the day, I, there's a money within our budget that we haven't used in the first part of this, this school year. I think there's other areas that we can continue to save money, specifically in transportation, albeit it's a reversible expense, it's still cash that's leaving. The other thing I would mention is, if we're gonna consider running any sort of deficit, we need to take a hard, long look of what we're doing from a summer project standpoint, if some of that can be pushed to a different calendar year. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that, we can't just ask question four. I mean, we need to look at it holistically, but in my opinion, and sitting on the finance committee, if you're telling me we want to go do COVID testing for all of our children and it costs $2 million, I think that's a good use of funds. But I also think we can probably shave a bunch out of the budget and probably come up with some cash elsewhere. So I, I think from my perspective, there is flexibility, but it, it needs to be warranted.
Understood. Anything that would be a large expense, the board's gonna be, it helps in our planning. Like I'm talking about second semester. If, if we come back with a transportation scenario, you know, at the elementary level, right? Then it's not in the budget, okay? If we were to, I, I just need to know, what, what's in play and what's not in play.
I agree with what Gavin said.
Just to re, oh, go ahead, Leah, go ahead.
Leah, go ahead, speak up, Penny.
Okay, I, I agree that. No, let's go outside the budget, but let's also be close and tight with the budget. So, yes.
Penny, go ahead.
Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've already spent the summer project money for this year, with last, with the summer projects we did over this summer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So what we proposing for summer projects in FY '22 coming up. FY '21 money's already been spent, but what we did this past summer.
But the money we're talking about right now is fiscal year '21 money.
That's correct.
Out of this, so, so we have no flexibility in summer projects right now.
Not in the FY '21.
But from a pure fund balance standpoint, Penny, that's really what I'm talking about. I mean, we have funds in our different bal, our, funds in our, our different funds, if you will.
Balance.
Uh, but if we look at it over a rolling two-year period, it'll, it'll, it'll balance itself out. So I'm fine running a deficit so as long as we're gonna make that up in a, in a following fiscal year.
Well, that was, that was what I was gonna bring up, is I, I'm interested in some of these things and my, you know, some of the ideas listed below here, some of the examples, but I want to caution the board, because when we put together this budget for this year, we made some assumptions, and one of those things was that we were probably going to have to use summer, you know, capital projects money to pay for some capital improvements, things that, that we didn't normally do. And so we're already stretching ourselves for this year, and with the promise of more stretching next year. And so I just want to be careful that we're considering both years' budgets when we're thinking about doing this, because next year will be equally as challenging. Number one, because of the transportation reimbursement, because our transportation has been down, just like last year, and we're not expecting as much of reimbursement this year. And then I read in, so maybe someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but in the finance documents that you were referring to from your meeting today, our collection rate is down, I think it was four or five percent.
Almost four, yeah.
Almost four.
Almost four, okay. Um, so that gives me pause as well. But I am interested in exploring, particularly if you're looking at that, what the second semester may bring in terms of reshuffling students and staff in order to meet the needs of everyone, how additional transportation may help us, particularly at the elementary level. And so I would ask you to re, do a little research on that, and then when that information is brought to us, if you could also please include the amount that we would be reimbursed. And so I'd like to look at the net impact on the budget.
The issue with the transportation, and so it's, I, I, Brian and his team can't necessarily say with certainty what our reimbursement rate will be, correct?
That's correct. We don't, we don't know.
Well, but we have a good idea. I mean, when you look back, even when we've had hard times before, we've, we've been in a pretty good range.
We can estimate it. You're right, Penny.
Right, right. Um, as far as the virus testing, well, I guess what I'd like to try to do, if you don't mind, is are there other people interested in seeing some information about how spending additional funds in transportation may be used to help us?
Yes.
Second semester?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's pretty much the majority of everybody?
Yeah, I think, nobody's objecting, I don't believe. Sandra?
You've got four.
Sandra?
Sandra and.
She may have stepped away.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Sorry, no, I don't.
I didn't hear what she said.
Sandra doesn't have an issue.
Okay, alright, thank you. I, I missed it, sorry.
And then are there, are there board members who would be interested in learning more about the virus testing?
Yes.
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 Absolutely.
Yep.
It sounded like.
Everybody's shaking their head, yes. Okay.
Okay.
You know, and again, well, we will collect information. As you know, there are other districts doing, that will be a significant, you know, expense there.
Right. And to Leah and Gavin's point, though, I think that doing all that with looking for ways to have savings in the budget as well, with transportation and, you know, maybe some of the projects that we discussed a few months ago, you know, to, to look for some ways to have some savings, not just spent.
If you read the finance memo, we're, we're trending right on, only in a few areas are we low, and there's reasons for it.
We're down about, what, 5% less than we've normally spent in general at this point?
But there's reasons. It's all listed, the reasons why.
Would it be maybe worth considering how we could try to obtain donations specifically for the testing that would allow us to, you know, be in.
To do what, Mike? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. For the, try to obtain donations somehow for the testing, if it's a significant amount of money. I mean, there are a lot of organizations that might be interested in helping kids be in school, if that's.
Tell me who they are. I mean, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody, but sure.
It's a possibility.
It would be helpful for me to know what type of dollars we're talking about, too.
It would be in the $2 to $3 million range minimum, depending on the scope and depending on, with our size of a district. And that would be starting second semester.
Right. So, so I think I heard enough, you know, the majority of the board would like more information about that. What about the third bullet? Is the board interested in acquiring additional technology solutions to support educational solutions?
And that, there's no specifics on that. That's just, you know, we, again, there, you know, if you're gonna be doing concurrent instruction, a whole range of different things, it's just, would be on the scope of the current tech budget.
So in addition to the current tech budget?
We wouldn't spend it without the board approving. I'm just saying, you know, currently we don't have that line, we don't have that flex, you know, we don't have that in the budget, right?
Yeah.
So what I, what I'm asking is, are people interested in learning more about what that might look like and how much it might cost? Because I'm thinking at some point we're gonna have to prioritize these things.
Right.
Yes, I think if, if you have any recommendations for anything on that, you should bring them.
Yeah, we'll see. There's some thoughts. It'll depend on what mode we're in, truthfully.
Okay, so pretty much everyone agrees I'm at?
Yeah, anybody disagree? Kevin's shaking.
I, I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be back in the building, but I don't want to spend a whole boatload on technology if it's not gonna benefit the, the delivery model. And then that's a, a hard one because of lead times and other things. So I'm willing to listen about it, but depending on how the labor conversations go, it might be a meat, a meat point.
There will definitely be an order here. There's no doubt. Okay?
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
Does the board, does the board want to prioritize these right now, or wait until we get the information from Brian and his staff?
Let's wait.
Wait.
Everybody's saying wait, I believe.
So Brian, does that give you enough information to close out this conversation?
The key for me is whether I'm in the, within budget or if I have the flexibility in the planning part to go outside of the budget. That's what I needed to know.
Yes.
I think what you're hearing is, um, we want to figure out if the juice is worth to squeeze.
Absolutely. There will be any expense, there will not be any spending unless the board is very aware of what, what it is and how much it is. Okay?
Okay.
Your answer?
I do. So can I summarize here what I think we discussed over the last couple hours? Would that be helpful?
Go for it.
Alright, just for my clarity. Alright, back to number one. We've got clarification on where to head with the basketball issue. Uh, we're gonna start up the team stuff following our current. Uh, we're going to start up the team stuff following our current mitigation efforts and, and I will be working collaboratively with, uh, our conference schools to see where this may be headed. We don't know whether we'll have a schedule or not, but start practice and, and follow our safety guidelines in that regard. Um, we are going to follow up with the, um, associations and have our labor management conversation, uh, exploring additional options on how we can implement our hybrid plan moving forward. And we are, I don't want to rehash it all, I think we know what those are. And we're going to entertain those conversations starting next Monday with them. Okay? Um, the, uh, number two, we talked a lot about the metrics. Again, I think that kind of rolls in now to the conversation, uh, with number one. And if there's a path forward there, we might consider one of those if it helps or, or head a different direction. Okay? Number three, um, the, the board is not interested in doing any calendar changes at this time, but definitely interested in looking at a different solutions for second semester. Okay? So we will begin to work on that. And then finally, the budget, uh, that we are able to bring proposals forward that currently are outside of our current budget. Okay?
One, one thing that I heard that I want to make sure if we need to schedule something we should was some concern about the amount of time that might elapse between that labor management meeting and when we would have an opportunity to discuss it. So does the board, did the board, I thought someone mentioned possibly adding a closed session later next week, you know, after that Monday meeting. Is that something we want to consider now or do we want to wait and see how Monday goes?
We can consider it and we, at the very minimum, we could, uh, have a, at least a closed session conversation from a collective bargaining standpoint, uh, on the update. Okay? Um, I, I am not optimistic that one meeting on next Monday afternoon is going to solve this problem. I, I'm just saying. It would be great if it did, but I think it'll take more than one meeting to, uh, resolve this issue one way or the other. We can definitely schedule a, a special board meeting for closed session purposes, uh, related to collective bargaining.
Is that something the board would like us to take a look at?
Yeah.
Should we at least put a hold on a date next week? Pick a day next week and put on hold and then we can?
Yep.
And Brian, you've got tomorrow, you said you'll be talking too, right? And Friday, I mean.
Not much is gonna, I mean, just gonna.
I'm very confident in you, Brian.
Thank you, Mike. Well, you know, this has been a huge part of this for seven months, working with our staff, on all aspects, right? Not just the collective bargaining agreements, on all aspects of this. Our teachers have done a great job and I want them to, whatever mode we're in, I want them to continue to do a great job.
We need them.
We all do.
No question.
Right? So, uh, and our support staff as well. So, okay? Um, I'm just, uh, you know, with that type of timeline and we could definitely talk about a date here that works for everybody, we'd probably, you know, an hour meeting would be my guess and we could do it by Zoom if the board chooses to do that. It would, there would be just a closed session, special meeting for closed session is what it would be, to update on collective bargaining discussions. Okay? Um, now, if that happens, you know, I, uh, what I'm hearing though, we would stay in the adaptive pause, uh, until no, earlier than the 16th, correct? At this point. Right?
I don't think we can do anything on the 9th.
No.
No.
That's what I'm asking.
Unfortunately.
Okay? All right. So we will communicate that tomorrow morning to all of our parents and staff that we are, uh, extending the adaptive pause to at least Monday, November 16th at this point.
But no later.
I didn't say that.
Are we picking a date or are we just gonna not pick one for a closed session?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Are we gonna pick a day for a closed session or no?
Yep.
Let's just move.
Yep, let's get it going.
Move her along a little bit.
I mean, Janine can send out a doodle pull, doodle pull too.
Can I just, can I just, do people prefer evenings or do you want something during the day?
Evenings.
Okay. Barry said evening, so should we go with that?
Zoom, right?
Yeah, Zoom.
I would suggest, can I just pick a day and a time and see if everybody?
Monday, Tuesday.
Do it.
Wednesday, Veterans Day, so Monday, Tuesday.
How about Wednesday's bad day, you said, Gavin?
I think it's a holiday.
Yeah, it's a Veterans Day, yeah. Bankers and post office, right?
Well.
Um, how about, I'm just looking here. Um, Tuesday at 4 o'clock. Barry, what's your, what, I know you've got.
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll be at work at least five, at 15, Tuesday.
6 o'clock Tuesday?
I'll, or.
No?
Saturday, 16th birthday, we've got dinner.
Okay.
I could do Monday or Wednesday.
I'm okay with Wednesday.
Well, Monday's, get the meeting at 4 o'clock Monday, yeah, guy.
Yeah, you can't quite get it.
I can't do Monday.
Okay. Wednesday? Gavin, can you, is there any time on Wednesday that?
I mean, I'm open, yeah. Just, let's just pick a time.
Okay.
I can do Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What time, Barry?
I could do Wednesday.
Six.
6 o'clock, 6 o'clock Wednesday?
Okay.
6 o'clock Wednesday?
Okay.
All right, 6, 6 o'clock Wednesday, we will post a special board meeting. It'll be Zoom. It'll be closed session only. Okay? And to update the board on that conversation. All right.
So one, one question on this, Brian. Not a lot of the labor or anything, but we've talked about the metrics and how they're going to be a topic in the meeting on Monday.
Yep.
The metrics are going to be a topic of the Labor Management Committee meeting on Monday, correct?
They're going to be what?
A topic.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And we've talked about adjusting them as a board, being interested in that, a majority, right? Can we talk about that in any more detail on the special board meeting on Wednesday? Can we do that too?
What do you mean, special detail?
No. Can we talk about it in any more detail in the special board meeting on Wednesday that we just scheduled?
We have to stay on collective bargaining in closed session. If the board wants to have an open session after that.
That's why I'm asking, yeah. Even though this is related to the Labor Management Committee.
It's up to the board, whatever you, whatever your wishes are.
So it's possible.
We need to post it that way, I need to know so we can get it posted correctly. And then it would be, we'd have to open back up.
I mean, if we're looking at coming back to school as soon as possible, right? And this is one of the things that might impact that, I think we should plan to go a little further with it. It's just my opinion.
What are you, what are you looking to discuss, Mike? I'm so sorry.
This is the, the metrics issue, right? Adjusting our metrics that we're currently operating under, that is going to be a topic of the Labor Management Committee meeting. If, if we're going to go back into hybrid mode as soon as possible, that's probably something that we need to get a little better handle on.
But won't that be part of our discussion from the Labor Management?
That was my question, just to make sure that it's okay, because that's a closed meeting, I just want to make sure.
I mean, won't, won't you be talking with labor about what metrics are?
Sure.
And so can't we talk about that in closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can. But that'll be part of the, yeah, I mean, you know, part of the collective bargaining. It's related to the clause in their contract. That is correct.
That makes sense. All right. Okay. We ready to move on?
Yes.
All right. Um, Craig, do we have to do policy tonight? Nope. You guys okay with kicking policy?
Sure.
All right. Um, let's look at these equity statements. Uh, several meetings ago, the board discussed developing and approving an equity statement. Since then, three drafts were created and shared with the board with option two receiving the greatest preference from the board. Um, it sounds like some people have a couple of suggestions with that. Does anyone want to create their suggestions or share their suggestions?
Well, I was one of the ones who voted for option two, but there's a line in option three that I think we need to include, uh, that says, "The Board of Education will do this by being equitable, inclusive, transparent, respectful, and impactful in how we serve and engage with students, parents." I, I, I like that sentence. I think that could go on, on the end of, you know, draft two, but I think that's empowers us to do what, what we're asking the community to do. So it, it kind of challenges the board to.
Yeah, I think that's a good change. Does anyone have any comments about that?
I can't, I couldn't hear what Barry was suggesting. He's suggesting.
I'm sorry. I, I will, I, I will reread for you. There's a line, there's a sentence that I really like in draft three. Can you hear me? "The Board of Education will do this," this being the second draft, "will do this by being equitable, inclusive, transparent, respectful, and impactful in how we serve and engage with students, parents, faculty, staff, and the administration." So that's kind of our challenge to us, the Board of Education, for how we're going to , uh, impact the equity statement.
I like that. Where are you adding it to number two?
The very end.
I thought just at the end.
I would agree.
Yeah, me too. Anyone else?
I had one, I had one comment.
Um, I'm uncomfortable in the first paragraph where, um, I think it's the second sentence, "We can support the district's commitment." I think we should be driving the district, we should be setting, um, we should be the ones asking the district to do it. And so I would feel more comfortable saying something like, "We stand behind and, you know, the district's commitment," or "We stand behind and commit to help achieve true and sustained equity through an intentional and keep going."
Number two. Second sentence.
Second sentence?
Second sentence, number two.
Ah, okay. So you want to change it to "we stand behind"?
So second sentence, would we perhaps, "We stand behind and commit to help achieve true and sustained equity," da, 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 da. I just feel like as the board, we should be driving the district's commitment, we shouldn't support it.
Okay.
Plus, plus I agree, the word, the word can support, can is not strong enough.
We could just say, "We commit to help achieve true and sustained equity."
That's fine.
Just say, "We commit."
We commit.
And take the rest of that wording out of there.
Yeah. No, that.
"We commit to help achieve true and sustained equity through blah, blah, blah."
Okay.
I like it.
I think in the last sentence, you read the last sentence, we will encourage the use of, and then it becomes plural.
Filled, yeah.
It shouldn't be, and it's the next.
Are you getting these down?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll, I'll switch it all to singular. You're right, Mike. Okay.
I want, I wanted to throw one more thing out for consideration and it's something that was included in my original draft, but Brian said it tonight and it is, it's in our district material. And it, the sentence is that, "To be clear, hate has no place in Barrington 220 schools and harassment, bullying, or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated." I just thought that that was a very strong statement. It's okay to disagree.
What do you, she wants to add it?
Yeah, perfect.
Worked for me.
I mean, is there, are opposed to that?
It's up to the board.
Do you still have that in writing?
No.
I do.
Second copy?
Yep.
All right. Penny, you're going to put that at the very, very end, so after the addition that Barry had?
That's where I would put it, yes. I would put it at the very end.
Perfect.
Last statement.
I got it. Thank you. All right, any other suggestions?
I think that as we're working through this, this is kind of like, um, our starting point, and I think this is like a work in progress that we're going to keep looking at as a board, because I think as we develop and we learn as a board, I think there's going to be opportunities to, to relook at this. And I think that's important to say that this isn't, you know, the final product, this is something that, you know, we're making a strong commitment to. And, um, you know, I also think that, you know, in addition to this, one of the things that should come to the top of our to-do list as a board is some training for ourselves, because we're the leaders. And I think it's important that we get some training and then that our superintendent and our administrative staff get some training so we can lead the way for this, um, in a, in an educated, clear, thoughtful manner. Um, because I know we all have different voices and there's a lot of different things to say in this, but, but, um, it's hard, we have to agree as a group, obviously. So I'm glad we're doing this.
I'm not in agreement with putting any kind of qualifier on this. We can read the commitment statement or, I mean, we can change it if we want to later, but I don't like putting a qualifier on it. I think we should.
Well, I'm not saying to add that.
No, and the other thing I wanted to just remind everyone is, you know, the companion piece to this statement is that we hopefully will someday finish our board goals. And we have this as a board goal, not this statement, but we have a, a category that's related to equity. And one of the things that I thought we had identified earlier was, you know, that we were going to be, um, setting some goals for the district. And one of those would be, you know, at the end of the year, we're going to be asking for a report of how we can improve things. And my thought was that this statement was just sort of ticking things off and that we were adopting this now, but that we had an opportunity after that research was done to come back and tweak this if we wanted to, or create yet another document of some kind that would, um, reinforce it.
All right, that sounds good. Are there any other changes to the, or additions?
I just have a one comment. With, we've had to spend a lot of time, understandably tonight and in general, on a very unique situation. And this agenda item, equity and diversity, you know, it was, it was on the end of the agenda and it's 11 o'clock and we've lost a lot of our, you know, visibility by this point. I just think in the future, the next time we're dealing with this issue again, if it's on an agenda, we should move it up to the top.
I agree, if it's possible, let's.
Penny, I think at the next board meeting, you should reference this with your comments. I think this would be important, or, or the superintendent, but I think, you know, I think since it's a, a board thing, I think, uh, you know, the board president should reference this.
I have a question for you, if it's in this category. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I just didn't know Penny heard me.
Can you hear us, Penny?
I, I can't, I can't hear very well, honestly.
Brian, you want to tell her what I just said, maybe? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry?
Penny, Barry just said that he thinks that you should include this in your next President's Report, just since a lot of visibility of this was probably lost tonight since it was so late.
Oh, well, here's the thing, like, if we're okay with this, we will actually approve it at our next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, once we get a, if we make these tweaks, we'll get the draft out. I'll put it in my weekly update next week, and we'll put it on as an action item on 17. And if the board even want to tweak it then, not a little bit, if somebody's not, that's fine.
I didn't know they were going to vote on it. I thought this was a formal thing. Okay.
We'll put this on our next board meeting, assuming you're ready to do that.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe make it a little farther up the agenda.
Got it.
Well, it's, it'll be an action item, so it'll be up at the top.
All right.
Okay?
Top action item.
All right. But what one of the committee members asked about, like, what's our typical way to respond to some, because a lot of times it's a private issue with students. You can't mention things, but how, what's a, our typical way to say something to our community? Because that was something that was a concern tonight, it sounded like, that, that there was a feeling we ignored this or something.
Like if you're being, if you're concerned about that, I mean, for the kids?
Well, no, like if something happened in the community like it happened last week, what's our typical response as a school? Like, how do we evaluate what our response is to make people feel like we're inclusive and we're caring and we're paying attention?
That's difficult.
It's, I, I, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Here's the thing.
Because I don't get it.
And I've said this repeatedly. I understand the comment tonight, you didn't do something fast enough. Well, that whole issue was under the control of the Barrington Police Department from the very, very beginning, right? We, we work collaboratively with our other governmental entities, and I'll just leave it at that, you know? And they were in the lead on that situation.
I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking for some clarification, that's all, Brian, just because, you know, everyone sees this from a different line.
We always work with them collaboratively, is all I'm going to say. And sometimes, we don't want to interfere with trying to get a resolution to some of those things either.
Absolutely.
Sometimes that would.
It would be negative.
Yes, it would.
Sure. And that's the last thing.
They asked us to do what we did. I'll put it that way.
Okay.
Okay? That's just judgment call, you know, from our staff standpoint in this case. It was, you know, several staff were involved in that discussion with the Barrington Police Department. But these situations are always difficult, because this one was not school-related, at least initially, right? It wasn't.
Well, and in the future, you know, maybe we'll have more proactive educational events around, around these topics. That'll be, you know, in a more positive light.
It's hard to have a concrete path on these, because they're all so different. You know, sometimes the flashpoint is in our buildings, right? You know that. Sometimes that's the case. Sometimes it's not. So, right?
Right. All right. So, moving on, agenda items for November 17th. Brian, what do you have?
Well, we will have, I'm assuming, an action item for the equity statement.
Got it.
Right? That's not on here. We will have a levy, a presentation and a consideration to approve the levy moving forward. We will have a Wonder World update and presentation from Matt and, and his team. And the superintendent search profile people are going to be here, right? Penny?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be on the agenda. And then, obviously, we will have another school year conversation on the agenda. Is there anything else? That's what we have planned.
Is the superintendent search part of closed or is that going to be open next?
That's open.
Oh, it's open, okay.
Right, Penny? I'm, I don't, I'm not, right? It's open session.
The, the profile discussion is an open session, but we are also meeting with them in closed session.
Oh, okay.
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes, okay.
So, Brian, would you, what do you think about adding a discussion item when board votes should be expected on this back-to-school reopening? I mean, I felt like that was, you know, kind of something that you went through tonight, and, and I, I still think there's a lot of confusion in the community as far as when is it a board issue, when is it a superintendent issue? And, you know, and, you know, tonight was, it was a board issue.
So I think we could discuss in our special meeting next week, was what I would suggest at this point.
Okay.
Whether there would need to be a board action or not, or whether it could be part of a discussion.
Awesome.
Does that make sense? And then we can put that on the agenda in the appropriate place. Okay?
Got it. All right, anything else? Okay, since there is no need for closed session.
I'm sure you don't want a closed session.
I know, right? Oh, gosh. We will not be approving action item 4.02, consideration to approve confidentiality of closed session minutes.
We don't have closed session.
Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Penny and Sandra, thank you.